So, good evening. Good evening and thank you all for coming to our council meeting this evening. So it's six o'clock and we're going to start on Wednesday, May 21st. And we had two closed session items and there's nothing to report out on that. And so the first thing on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. And the city of Arcata acknowledges the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threatening to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. So if you'd like to, please join me in the flag salute. Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. So ceremonial matters. We have a certificate of recognition presented to Zach Ramsey. And that will be read by Councilmember Meredith Matthews.
All right, this is a certificate of recognition presented to Zach Ramsey. Whereas Zach Ramsey has been recognized by the National Waste and Recycling Association, NWRA, as one of their Driver of the Year award recipients, specifically the 2025 Driver of the Year in the Regional Residential category. And whereas the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby wishes to recognize Zach Ramsey's outstanding contributions for his commitment to safety, years of service, and community engagement as a waste collection professional. And whereas there are more than 150,000 waste and recycle collection drivers nationally, Zach Ramsey being selected as one of the National Drivers of the Year is significant for the County of Humboldt, the City of Arcata, and recology. And whereas Zach Ramsey is well revered in our community and has been servicing all waste totes in the City of Arcata for over 20 years. He embodies what it means to care for your customers, operate a 40-tonne collection vehicle safely and efficiently, and make impactful changes to those on his route. And whereas Zach Ramsey's contributions are making a difference in our community and have now been recognized on a national scale. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby expresses their deepest appreciation and thanks to Zach Ramsey for his dedication to serving his community for over two decades. Dated May 21st, 2025, signed by Mayor Alex Stillman. And Zach is here to accept.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So this is my word that I got down in Las Vegas. So I'm from Blue Lake and there's 1,200 people in Blue Lake. There was 1,500 people in this room. And it was terrifying. So I had this long speech, but I got through it and it actually turned out really good. So thank you for this. It's very cool. I've been here in Arcata for 15 years, I mean, or 24 years, but I still have a long ways to go. And I probably wouldn't have been selected for this because there's garbage men that have been 36 years of experience or 40 years of experience. But I don't think I would have won without, you know, the letters and the nice words from the people of Arcata. And they really take that into consideration, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. That's very exciting. Our next proclamation is in honor of the kinetic sculpture race, May 24th, 2025. And that'll be read by Councilmember Sarah Schaefer.
It is my honor to read this glorious proclamation. Whereas the art and sport of kinetic sculpture racing, difficult to truly comprehend but easy to enjoy, is a Humboldt tradition originating in Ferndale and spreading gloriously to other parts of planet Earth. And whereas the kinetic tradition has been part of Humboldt County life since 1969, with at least one kinetic race starting on the Arcata Plaza for the last 50 years, not counting those two years when we were thwarted by a global pandemic. And whereas the glorious founder of all kinetic sculpture racing, Hobart Brown, a Ferndale artist envisioned a three-day triathlon of the art world. From Arcata through Eureka to Ferndale, over land, sand, mud, and water, and coined many a phrase such as "adults having fun so children will want to grow older", and "if you're not living on the edge, you're taking up too much space". And whereas the Kinetic Grand Championship is a tribute to the rich history of kinetic racing in Humboldt. The Kinetic Universe, the Kinetic Grand Championships' nonprofit organizing body, works to promote the tradition and values of kinetic sculpture racing in Humboldt County. And whereas several other cities across the world have kinetic sculpture races inspired by Humboldt County's mother race, unusually held every Memorial Day weekend. Recognizing this art event involves the whole family and community while also promoting tourism, sustainability, bicycling, and silliness. The race enhances our community's image both nationally and internationally. And whereas the Kinetic Sculpture Race encourages the recycling of junk and tidying up of our environment while exploring sustainable transportation as a creative solution to greenhouse gas emitting vehicles, thus fighting global climate change. And whereas the Kinetic Universe presents the Kinetic Grand Championship that will challenge creativity, provide opportunities for artists and artistic discovery, and lift community spirit and pride, resulting in the most glorious weekend of the year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby congratulates Kinetic Universe on its glorious and dedicated stewardship of the uniquely Humboldtian tradition of kinetic sculpture racing. The Kinetic, or the Council encourages everyone to attend the kickoff of the 2025 Kinetic Grand Championship on this Saturday, May 24th, 2025, on the Arcata Plaza at the sound of the noon whistle. And it's the time we get the noon whistle back, finally, right? Okay, for the glory, and we have Olivia Gambino and it looks like some other kinetic folks here. No, Olivia Gambino's not even here. Okay, we have some kinetic folks to accept in all of their gloriousness. So thank you guys for being here.
Thank you so much. We are here to accept this on behalf of the Kinetic Universe, Queen Subi, Princess Tootsie Rolls, the Kinetic Dream Team, and Queen Shay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are so honored. When we say "for the", will you say "glory"?
Yeah.
For the glory! Thank you!
And Queen Shay made it back and just in time to be able to be here for this presentation. So it's really nice to have her in town. So thank you. Our next proclamation is in recognition of Asian American and Pacific Islanders Heritage Month, May 2025. And that'll be read by Councilmember Stacy Atkinson Salazar.
Whereas the City of Arcata recognizes the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander AAPI Heritage Month, a time to honor and celebrate the countless contributions, rich cultural heritage, and profound impact that AAPI individuals have made throughout our history and continue to make today. And whereas AAPI communities represent a vibrant, diverse tapestry of cultures, languages, traditions, and histories, enriching every aspect of our society, from the arts and education to business, public service, and beyond. And whereas in Humboldt County, Asian Americans have a long and complex history, marked by profound hardship and perseverance, including the forced expulsion of Chinese residents from Eureka in 1885 and from Arcata in 1886, almost exactly one year after Eureka's expulsion. Acts of discrimination and exclusionary policies and ongoing challenges have been faced by generations of AAPI families. And whereas despite these injustices, AAPI individuals and communities have demonstrated extraordinary resilience, continually contributing to the cultural, economic, and social vitality of Humboldt County and shaping our collective identity through the sharing of art, cuisine, innovation, and civic leadership. And whereas the art and culture of AAPI communities through festivals, performances, visual arts, storytelling, and more have been integral to creating a richer, more inclusive, and dynamic Humboldt County, inspiring greater understanding, connection, and celebration of our shared humanity. And whereas the City of Arcata remains committed to uplifting the voices of AAPI residents, confronting and addressing past and present injustices, promoting equity, and ensuring that all people, regardless of background, can live, work, and thrive in a community grounded in dignity and respect. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and encourages all residents to learn from and celebrate the rich histories, contributions, and cultures of AAPI communities, to stand in solidarity against hate and discrimination, and to continue building a more inclusive future for all. Do we have anyone here to accept this?
I believe I see Sherry Wu on Zoom.
Okay, you want to see if she wants to say anything?
Yes. Sherry, please go ahead. Sherry, please unmute yourself. Sherry, are you there? It might be a different Sherry. Sorry.
She was like, no, I'm not, I'm muting. Well anyways, thank you and let's give them some applause.
Thank you. So next is our report from Commissions and Committees, and this evening we do not have any. We have staff reports. All reports shall be specifically limited to city business and shall not request or lead to action by the Council at this meeting. So A, we have received an update on the City of Arcata's climate adaptation energy projects from Deputy Director of Environmental Services Emily Bevie. Thank you.
All right, my greatest public speaking fear is tech challenges. So, we have made it. Good evening, Council and Community Members. So tonight's staff report is to provide you with an update, as you mentioned, on climate and energy projects. But more specifically, I want to speak directly to next fiscal year's City Council goal to develop a climate resiliency pipeline of projects which will cohesively synthesize citywide effort and leverage potential funding sources. So, saying that five times fast, first, I will provide a little bit of a roadmap to where we're headed this evening. And I will also provide the disclaimer that I'll try to be succinct, but sharing all the citywide climate resiliency initiatives is a lot, so bear with me. First, my plan is to provide some context and purpose of developing what we've been calling a climate resiliency pipeline. I'll then share that draft resiliency pipeline, which will cohesively demonstrate how we're helping to build a resilient community in the face of climate change. And then I'll seek feedback from Council should they choose to provide feedback. So currently, we should give ourselves credit where credit is due. The city is doing a lot to prepare for our future needs. And that comes up in infinite funding priorities, specific projects. For example, we have our excessive energy use tax. And as those funds have diminished, the city has set aside previous ARPA allocations on climate and resiliency projects. And as those funds have sunsetted, we have Measure H where there's been climate prioritization. We have lots of capital improvement projects, so we're doing a lot. But we aren't always telling our story very well, sometimes at all, right? I think we're in that go mode where we're doing and doing and planning and planning, but we're not always stepping back and sharing. Additionally, we can sometimes be wonky. I particularly am very guilty. I think about the Regional Climate Action Plan and I often think about the goal of 40% emissions reductions below 1990 levels. And I probably lost you halfway through that first sentence because we don't always live in that world and community members don't always relate to or connect with that. And I think we lose a lot in some of that wonkiness that we can live in. Furthermore, sometimes we operate in silos. So thinking about the Climate Action Plan, we're not necessarily thinking about sea level rise, for example, though we're doing a lot, as you'll see in the next staff report, around sea level rise. And so sometimes we silo our efforts off. In funding, we think about set-asides. And there's a lot of benefit to working in these silos, right? It's important in order to move projects forward, programs forward, capital improvement planning. It makes sense. But we're not always thinking holistically. And through those silos, we can be missing out on potential partnerships and resources to leverage our efforts to achieve a greater impact that could become available when we're thinking and communicating cohesively. So, that is sort of the why, or that's the framing for the why that I'll share. What is this climate resiliency pipeline that I'm talking about? Really what it is, is it's a set of projects, plans, and programs that will cohesively demonstrate how we're helping to build the resilient community in the face of climate change. It's relatable. It's impactful. And it's also a brainchild that I'll share. I've been participating in a California Climate Leadership Program that's funded through the California Endowment and is part of the Center for Community Investment. And they really harp over and over and over again on the importance in having these project pipelines because showing that cohesiveness really generates visibility and opportunity to leverage impact. And so getting into the why, having this climate resiliency pipeline will help identify opportunities and gaps. It's a tool that can help us prioritize. It helps us gauge if our efforts will meet the mark. It can be a resource, as I mentioned, to leverage impact and partnerships. And again, resources will follow the cohesion. And through this leadership program that I started, not really sure if I understood their point, really as I've been going through it, it's become very clear that with that cohesiveness, resources will follow. So before I get into the framework itself, I wanted to paint a picture of what a resilient future could look like. And recognizing there's a variety of lived experiences to account for, I'd like to offer one imaginary illustrative example that I'm going to read. I don't have it memorized, so bear with me. Imagine it is the year 2050 and a regular day for Arnold, a resident of Arcata. Arnold lives in a low-lying part of the city where he is able to walk his dog every morning along a trail network of levees that also serve to keep his home and wastewater safeguarded from the bay that continues to rise with sea levels. Arnold and his children bike together along a safe bike route to school drop-off, and then he bikes to work at Alder Grove Industrial Park. On busier days, Arnold has the option to take his electric vehicle or hop on the hydrogen-fueled bus. At the end of the day, he and his family pick up their weekly farm share from a local farm and then head to the community center to play some drop-in basketball with friends. That evening, they return home where their solar power battery and electric heat pump have kicked on for the night to keep them warm. Arnold doesn't have to worry about whether his toilet will flush, where his water will come from, if there will be electricity, or whether his home will flood. If a disaster strikes, he knows he can evacuate to that same community center and that the city has a plan to keep community members safe during response and recovery. Although Arnold makes an average income to support his family and he has experienced the climate shocks that will come with living in year 2050, he has access to resources that he needs to ensure he can live a decent quality of life. Little more relatable than 1990 levels and 40% emissions and, you know, planning for X elevation when the sea levels rise. So that's my point to creating this framework is really to help cohesively paint the picture of here's what the city's doing so in the future, we can, no pun intended, weather the storms. So the climate resiliency framework, it lays the foundation for ensuring that Arcata is able to absorb climate shocks while preserving a healthy quality of life. And so we have divided this pipeline into, I think, six or so different categories. I'll go through those categories and I won't read everything line for line, again, trying to remain succinct. But I'll pause at the end of each category, so if there's specific questions that Council members have, please feel free to ask them. So the first goal envisions that the community and its assets are protected from local climate risks while public access and open space is preserved. Examples could be flood protection, stormwater management, access to clean water, and multi-benefit open space projects. So currently, you'll see in the third column, we've got a lot going on, particularly with regard to sea level rise, our wastewater treatment plant planning efforts, as well as rehabilitation of old city water and sewer infrastructures. The far-right column depicts our currently planned and upcoming projects, plans, and programs. And really there, we're highlighting strategic property acquisition for sea level rise planning as well as Janes and Jolly Giant Creek Restoration and Stormwater Management projects. I'll pause there. Any questions yet? Okay. The next goal envisions that the community is readily able to prepare for, respond to, and recover from natural disasters. Project types could be community resiliency hubs, neighborhood mobilization, and hazard planning. The orange depicts recently completed projects. I didn't go too far back into history. And within that, you'll see that Arcata Community Center is a designated evacuation center. It's a Red Cross location. There has been some emergency preparedness for city staff, water, storage backups. And we're in the process of updating hazards and emergency operation plans. You'll see upcoming, there's a lot of planning and outreach with regard to disaster event response, particularly for both city staff and the community. The next goal aims to ensure that the community has access to local, reliable, low- or no-carbon energy. Project types could be building electrification, rooftop solar, battery backups, et cetera. You'll see in the third column, there is a lot of work particularly related to energy projects at city facilities, even more specifically with regard to the community center. And I just need to catch my error in my presentation. There's an organics franchise agreement, which is a spoiler alert for the next category, so pay no mind. On the far-right column, you'll see that the Climate Action Plan has started to make an appearance. And so what we did is we took not all, but some of the key and most city-specific measurements and integrated them into this to show how this framework sort of aligns with a lot of the climate action planning efforts as well. And I realized I should have paused and framed that this pipeline currently is looking at a five-year time horizon. So just to kind of bracket where we're thinking right now. Again, you'll see in that Climate Action Plan implementation, there's a lot around electrification, reducing energy particularly with regard to the residential and commercial sector. So it's taking some of what the city is doing in our leadership and trying to broaden that to the greater Arcata community. The next goal is that as we transition to a resilient community, affordability is kept at the forefront. There's a little overlap here, of course, but project examples could include energy efficiency, rooftop solar, electric vehicles, power purchase agreement, and green workforce development. There's a lot of different sort of aspects that are within this category. There's some projects with regard to the organics in county organics processing facility that the city is supporting HWMA with a feasibility study on. This is where our cost-effective franchise agreement should live. There's also projects around Bayside Park Farm, edible food recovery. And so there's sort of the rates as well as the food for the community that's local and affordable. You'll see some energy projects there, as well as the steel waterline replacement project with the intent of keeping costs down for our residents. So a little bit of a catch-all, for lack of a better term. And then similarly with the planned and upcoming projects and programs, there's a lot around electrification of both infrastructure and vehicles. And utility use conservation, I'll say. And then I think this is the last, yes, this is our last goal, which is to ensure that every community member has access to open space and a variety of low- or no-carbon transportation options. Project examples could be public transit, active transportation, EV infrastructure, community gardens, farms, parks, trails. I recognize not everything fits in a perfect category, so there's a little bit of overlap, like I mentioned before. But this category for our current projects or recently completed project, there is a ton around active transportation and complete streets. There's also projects around our voluntary carbon offset program with our community forest. We had our e-bike vouchers that we partnered with RCEA on, helping to incentivize residents to purchase e-bikes. I'm sure the list continues to go on. And then again, that far-right column has some active transportation projects as well as some specific Climate Action Plan implementation measures. So before I head into questions, that's the outline of where we are at currently with this climate resiliency pipeline. And really, it's in its infancy phase in terms of generating the concept of this pipeline, starting to build the pipeline out itself. It really synthesizes what we already have either in the works or know we'll have in the near term. But I think that we could go a lot further in further fleshing out the pipeline itself and really helping to clarify where we want to go with this, if we want to go with this, in the future. Staff has begun to think of some ways that we could potentially integrate it with city planning, such as as part of our CIP process or as we do our potential budget reviews. The pipeline right now focuses really on areas that the city has the direct ability to control or influence, but we could think about mapping out potential partnerships at the local or regional scale. So there's a lot that I think could live and evolve from this pipeline. And I really wanted to share where we're at currently. And as we've been working through this evolution, within the Climate Fellowship, within working one-on-one with different staff, as well as sort of within my own brain, there's a number of questions that I would share for consideration that have been bubbling up. It's not to say that there need to be any answers to any of these questions now, but really just starting to put forth things that we're thinking about and things that the Council might want to think about. Those questions are, how could this be useful to the Council? How might we share and co-create our vision with the community? Is there an interest in developing a longer time horizon, say, 2050? How might we reflect regional partnerships and efforts? Do these categories make sense? And your perspective, how will we know if we've met that mark? And I'd reflect back to that example. And I'd reflect back to that example of Arnold's day in the life. What could accountability look like to our community and does this overall strategy resonate? So I will leave it at that, open it up for questions, and thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm sure the council has some questions. We'll start with Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Emily. I just wanted to say that this is a really helpful tool, and if you could share it with us, I think that would be excellent, too, just because you have a question up there that literally just came up at RCEA's Community Advisory Committee meeting that I was at last week, and really just like looking at ways that elected officials and that like the different municipalities can partner with these agencies that we're all involved in, but sometimes it can be, you know, we can forget the other things that we're doing and like lose the opportunity to be able to both give like feedback on different projects that we're doing and hear, you know, I'm, we're all probably hearing about climate stuff at our different JPAs and how we can work on those projects. And so when we know what we're working on, that, so we can talk to city staff and we can bring that to our different JPAs and just kind of, kind of create more of that joint regional effort and really share resources, I think is really important. And so just even having something like having this slideshow in our back pocket to remember like, oh yeah, that's something that we're working on towards this goal, let's connect these people, even as simple as that is super helpful. So thank you for putting this together, and it would definitely be, yeah, just cool to watch these projects go kind of through this framework. So thanks, Emily.
Thank you. Councilmember Stacy Atkinson Salazar.
Sure, so I'll focus on a couple of these. I do think, yes, the strategy resonates, and thank you, and I think our community appreciates having something concrete and solid to look at. And as far as developing a longer time horizon, I mean, I, yes, we will, as things go forward, we will always be changing and adapting, so I think this will naturally be occurring. And how far out it goes, I think, is really dependent on staff and what seems reasonable to, you know, for how far do we need to look ahead? I'm sure that that is different depending on what the subject matter is, right? And, yeah, so I appreciate it, and I think it's a great framework.
Thank you. And Councilmember Meredith Matthews.
No, thank you, Emily. That was a, that was a lovely presentation. I really appreciate the way you categorize thing, and I think you're right, we don't often really, you know, have staff reports where we go over these things, and I think it's really important to let the public know, like, how hard we're working and what we're actually doing, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And thank you. And Vice Mayor Kimberly White.
No, I, I'm super excited about this. This is very useful to council for sure, and ways that we might share and co-create our vision within the community, some of the things that Kuna is doing is a disaster preparedness block party, which we'll be doing our third annual one at the end of the summer. I would love to see resilient hubs throughout the neighborhood where each one would have building electrification, rooftop solar, and battery backup, which is what we're doing out in Valley West right now. Also, if, how do we know if we've met the mark? One of those ways to measure would be, I'd love to see if Arcata can be the next tsunami-ready community. And I just recently emailed our city manager about ways that we might look forward to doing that, so I'm excited to do that. And then I'm just curious about the e-bike vouchers. I know that it's been a little bit of a task trying to coordinate them with our CEA, with the California state ones, and there's been a couple hiccup's in there. Do we, have we used them at all, or we have more still?
You know, I'm not sure offhand what the status is, but I'd be happy to get back to you on the e-bikes. Yeah, I was actually recently, as I was putting this together, was wondering, how's that going?
I think that's all I have.
Can I just add one more thing, too? A topic that came up at our Equity Arcata Leadership Meeting today, too, was the, the Blue Zones and that, you know, there's some work being done at the university with that group. And I think, again, this aligns perfectly with that, too, of looking at, you know, what are the environmentally conscious, sustainable kind of habits that a community can build in to its environment to, you know, improve people's lives in general? And I think that's a cool opportunity for collaboration, you know, that the, the city, the university, and, you know, these various groups can have of just researching, yeah, what's the way to go with this and how is it going to help people's lives?
And I sit on the Humboldt Transit Authority, and I know that we're doing quite a bit as far as our bus system is concerned, and trying to make sure that we're meeting all the climate control things. And so I think that's a really valuable asset, and that was one of the things you mentioned, and you're, you're portraying the perfect day, and I, I think we'll, we'll see it happen further with, if transit anyhow. And thank you very much for the presentation and bringing us up to date. It'll be interesting as things happen, one thing or another happens, that we could be informed that, oh, we've met that goal and this is what we see that's happened from it. I would appreciate that. I think we all would.
Could we get a copy of your presentation? And also, if you had any other updates on the climate leadership program that you're doing, that sounds pretty exciting.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to provide the presentation, the framework, and updates on the program as well.
Okay, thank you very much for this evening's presentation, and now, and we will move on to our next presentation from staff. Thank you very much, Emily. So our next item is receive an update regarding the City of Arcata's Local Coastal Program from Director of Community Development, David Loyah. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be presenting tonight on a quick update on the Local Coastal Program. It's massive, so there's no way I can encompass all of it, obviously, in one short presentation, but I did want to get you thinking about this. Before we jump into this, I just wanted to emphasize the idea of creating these pipelines that Emily was just referring to, pointing back to some recent successes the city's had in doing this exact same kind of work, using this exact framework. I think you could characterize the work that we did with the long-range planning, with the General Plan, the Gateway Code, the, you know, pulling the, the grant resources together and bringing that planning work to the city, ultimately ending with the HUD Pro Housing Grant Award, again, which was, you know, one of 32 throughout the nation, is specifically tied to having that long vision and those connected series of projects. So I really want to emphasize the, the work that she's doing and appreciate that she's doing that for the City of Arcata. I'll also note it's not actually March 2025, but I did want to bring you current on work to date. I think I told you recently in another forum that I've been working on the Local Coastal Program update my entire career, and it really started back in 2000 with the adoption of the General Plan 2020. And so this is a body of work that's been going on for quite some time. The element that, the local coastal element was adopted in 1989, and the zoning was last adopted in 1994. We've done a lot of work since that time, obviously, and so it's time to update them. I mentioned that in 2000, the General Plan was the kickoff to that, the Land Use Code was updated in 2008, and that was intended originally to be our Local Coastal Program. In 2012, we received certification contingent on adopting a whole body of additional information that was released at the Coastal Commission hearing for that certification. And the council at that time said, hey, look, we just, we haven't gone through the process, the public process to, to accept these. And so we did not accept that certification in 2012. In 2014, I restarted the update process, really started working more closely with coastal staff. There were some changes at the state level in the approach to how they worked with local jurisdictions in updating these local coastal programs. And in 2015, the city was awarded its first LCP grant from the Coastal Commission, and we used that to start working on the coastal land use element. So really, the modern version of the Local Coastal Program that you see on our website right now, I would say dates back to 2014, and involves tons of public engagement, several LCP grants, and information that, you know, went into sea level rise, went into, you know, the background, went into the policy, and has culminated with the coastal zoning ordinance. Our third grant was awarded in 2022, and Environmental Services actually applied for a fourth award to work on what I would characterize as sort of a pathways adaptation planning program that I won't talk about tonight, but we can bring back as information for later. There were several public meetings, I'm not going to characterize all of them, but dating back to 2016, we've had drafts that were put together well enough that we could start having conversations. We've spent a lot of time in 2016, 2017 through 2018 focusing on sea level rise and, and our policy there. Obviously, with the pandemic, there was a, you know, a lot of the, the work that we were doing hit, you know, challenges moving forward, but we continued through the pandemic with several online meetings. And then that really culminated in 2024 with the General Plan adoption. Since that time, we've been doing a lot of additional public input in mostly sessions with the Planning Commission, but the, there have been a couple of forums that the community's been able to come participate in, in coordination with the coastal staff, local coastal staff. And really, in what, where we're at right now is that the Planning Commission has gone through and done its work at informal hearings, these haven't been noticed, public hearings through late '24 and early 2025. And at their last meeting, they gave basically their final recommendations for policy changes that they wanted to see, some changes to the, the coastal zoning ordinance. And with that, they're basically ready to hold formal public hearings. So by July of 2025, we anticipate noticing formal hearings, and by that, you know, I anticipate those to go relatively swiftly with the Planning Commission, because they've already spent the time and energy going through them. They'll forward those to you, and by mid-July, I anticipate the city council will be holding formal public hearings on the Local Coastal Program update. The idea then is by late 2025, we'll be submitting for Coastal Commission certification. They have, excuse me, timeframes that they can take to, for those reviews. Their first timeframe is a 90-day timeframe, and my hope is to work closely with staff locally here and at our state level to ensure that our Local Coastal Program is before the Coastal Commission within that 90-day timeframe. There is a process that would allow them to take an additional year, but we'll work closely with staff to make sure that they have what they need to make the decisions and make recommendations to the Coastal Commission. We're already making good progress on this because with the last coastal grant that we received, we're using part of that money to actually develop the, the application materials that coastal staff will need to, to do their review. And in fact, a lot of that material will be useful for their development of the, the staff reports that they'll present to the Coastal Commission, addressing many of the issues that they'll need to know in order to identify, you know, any impacts associated with those updates. I want to give you a quick overview, that's kind of the process and timeline, but I do want to give you a quick overview of the coastal zone and permitting, and what this, what the impact of this coastal update will look like. You see here the aerial image of the City of Arcata, red outline for the city boundary, and the blue outline is the local, the coastal boundary. Areas to the west or to the south of this boundary are in the coastal zone, areas to the north and east are outside the coastal zone. So that's the area that is going to be affected by this coastal update, basically areas within the city limits that are in the coastal zone. The Local Coastal Program will only regulate these areas, and it will not have any regulatory effect on the inland areas or areas outside the city limits. Switching here to a map that's similar, but this is, this was actually from our first certification back in 1989. The black thick boundary is the coastal boundary, the star is on the plaza, just to orient you here. And I wanted to use this map because it's easier to show you these inland zones that aren't affected by the coastal zone, but I also wanted to show you the area that's in the retained jurisdictions, the area that the Coastal Commission has retained authority to regulate land uses in. Most of it is natural areas, but there are some areas in the South G and H Streets that are around Butcher Slough that they retain jurisdiction over. All of those areas that are grayed out here are not subject to the city's coastal zoning ordinance, they're not subject to our authority at all. The Coastal Commission does look to our LCP to make its decisions in the retained jurisdiction to try and be consistent with the, the intent that the city has established in its Local Coastal Program, but it's not beholden to those policies or standards. So it's really these areas here where the city will be issuing coastal development permits that all of this body of policy really pertains. It's mostly urbanized areas, most of that urbanized area is actually in a special zone where coastal development permits aren't even required if, if you have a principally permitted activity. So it's important to note that, you know, all of this effort that we're going into really only affects a very small proportion of our city. And I already mentioned that Coastal Commission issues permits in the retained jurisdiction. So we just adopted our General Plan 2045, and you may recall as we were going through that process, there was a big question, well, you know, how is the Local Coastal Program going to incorporate? Are we going to have to update the Local Coastal Program again? What is the timeline for this? What happens with the Gateway Area and all of that with, you know, with, with the coastal update? At the time, I had to hedge a little bit. I wasn't sure which process was going to get ahead of which one. Now I can tell you with confidence that you've adopted the General Plan, you've adopted the Gateway Area Plan, and we've incorporated these into our proposed update for the Local Coastal Program. So there will be no confusion, there'll be no two-step process, all of the zoning and land use policies that you've adopted will be effective citywide, including in the coastal zone, when this LCP is certified. There's some nice red arrows that indicate areas that were potentially, are especially affected. Now I do want to dig, I'm not going to get into the, the zoning in great detail, but I want to touch base just real quick because we have an innovative strategy for how we're approaching zoning in the Local Coastal Program. I want you to be aware of it as we move forward with this. We're using overlay zones in the coastal zone as we do in other areas of the city for other special zoning types. So if you look at this cartoon of a property, you may have a base zoning layer, let's say it's industrial limited. We're going to have an overlay zone for the coastal zone that's coastal industrial limited. That will allow us to retain only those zoning features in that overlay zone that affect coastal resources. Anything that doesn't affect coastal resources that the Coastal, Coastal Commission doesn't need in order to certify our Local Coastal Program, but we still feel are important to regulate for the City of Arcata, will remain in the underlying zoning, the base zoning. And everything that affects coastal resources will be in that overlay zone. This has two benefits. First off, our zoning doesn't get cumbersome over time as we make minor changes to those base zones, and then we've got a disconnect between the coastal zone and the base zone, which was a problem that we had in our prior zoning, and we still carry that, that problem forward with our 1989 plan. It also has the benefit of really being able to focus the Local Coastal Program on only those issues that are important to the coastal act. And so this is, to my knowledge, a unique approach in the state, as far as I'm, as I understand, will be the first jurisdiction to put this forward, and we've been working closely with our coastal staff locally here and at the state level to ensure that they understand how this zoning overlay process works. So I'm not going to get into detail here, but here's the land use table that shows how that relates in the coastal zoning ordinance. You'll see that we have the exact same types of land use designations, low density, very low density, mixed use, industrial, et cetera, that you'll see in the- that you'll see in the underlying base zoning, but they all have a C associated with them, a coastal designation, and that's how we can tell them apart. We do this, for instance, with planned development zones. If you have a property and it's got a planned development zoning overlay, you get the little colon PD associated with your property. And so you might have residential medium, colon planned development, is your official zoning with that overlay associated with it. We'll have the exact same thing, but you'll have the tack on for coastal zoning for those properties that are affected in the coastal zone. Okay, so the timeline going forward, I already touched on this a little bit, but just to give it a little more detail, July 8th is when we're planning on noticing the Planning Commission hearing. They'll be making a recommendation to the City Council, as they did with the general plan and the zoning updates that we did associated with that. So they'll adopt a resolution and forward that resolution to you. I anticipate the, the hearing coming to the City Council on July 16th. And at that time, you'll have the option of introducing the zoning ordinance, the coastal zoning ordinance, and adopting the local coastal element. That local coastal element will not go into effect, nor will the zoning until it's certified and then you accept it, but you'll have the opportunity to adopt the zoning on August 6. From there, sometime in the fall, we'll be sending that to the Coastal Commission. The process going forward from there, as I indicated, could take some time. But once the Coastal Commission ultimately certifies our local coastal program, they'll send it back to you, and you will accept those updates, that certification, and it'll become effective after that point. So that's the process. Happy to answer any quick questions, but really, this is just a quick update. If you'd like to get into a little bit more detail before your informal hearings, we can set that as a regular agenda item where you can make decisions and provide direction prior to your hearings in July.
Thank you very much. So we'll start with, okay, Kimberly, do you have any questions?
I don't at this time. Thank you for the presentation.
I, I don't have questions, but thank you for the creativity in the process and the uniqueness. I know that's part of why it's taking a minute. And so I like the out-of-the-box thinking for you and staff of how to make, because we have a lot of folks that live in our coastal, in that coastal zone. So the, the creativity that you're doing in that, I appreciate.
Well, this has been a long time coming, and it's been a very difficult situ, I say, from my point of view, it's been very difficult to go through the process and to meet all the requirements. And if, we still will probably have requirements that we are not even sure of yet. But I thank you for your presentation and look forward to the future around the coastal act. So thank you. So that is it. And thank you very much for coming and telling us all of this. And so we'll go on to our next item on the agenda, which is other staff reports. And I'll ask our city manager, do you have any other staff reports for this evening?
Not this evening, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And before we go into oral and written communications, I'm going to take a quick break. So, thank you. So thank you very much and for that little break. And we will call the meeting back to order now. And so I'm calling the meeting back to order now. Thank you all, council members, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is oral and written communications. Are you ready yet? Are you ready? Are you ready? All of you two up here, are you all ready for the council to go on? Okay. So, oral and written communications is early, time limited. The council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters, not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes, and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three minutes of your time for your public comment, this item is continued at the end of the meeting under item 12, where speakers are granted three minutes. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. There will also be a time to provide public comment specific to each item when that item is being reviewed by the council. So we will open oral communications, and please line up along the wall if you wish to speak. And thank you very much. So please, someone start. We're waiting. Please start. Thank you very much, sir, for coming forward.
Abraham Seraphino from Arcata. And while we campaigned weekly for American civilian hostages to be brought home, watched the journalists, medics, and schoolteachers who were holding them in their homes in Gaza kill them one at a time, and even when we celebrated the release of the last American survivor on Friday, conversations were taking place here to try and build official, cultural, and material ties to Hamas, the only governing body in Gaza City, so that my hard-earned tax dollars could be funneled to an organization that was killing Americans. The same tactics were used to disrupt and undermine this most sacred of institutions that were used when Jewish students were assaulted at Kalpali. Local private businesses were vandalized and shut down, and their owners were falsely accused of being part of a secret Zionist conspiracy just because they were Jewish. Gaza City portrayed as practically uninhabitable after supposedly being bombed or rubble, currently has sister city relationships with 17 cities in 14 countries, including Iran and Turkey, while Dikuzan, Dikuzan, Katta, Crescent City's sister city in Japan, has won, all coordinated by Mohammed al-Shakrav, Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition's personal direct contact within the Palestinian Authority. So where's the money really going? A large percentage of Hamas budget comes from charity, especially now that the annual billion from Obama, Trump, and Biden were quietly paused after October 7th. We are all complicit. You were right about that part. But what would Arcata do with a billion dollars a year? Because Gaza used it to buy tens of thousands of rockets, motorizing hang gliders, and GoPros to livestream their war crimes. War crimes the RPJC denies took place in the hundreds of miles of terror tunnels where they tortured Holocaust survivors to death while their own people starved. Don't allow hate groups like the RPJC to intimidate you into submission with their gaslighting, victim blaming, conspiracy theories, or create an impression that the majority of us here in Humboldt County don't believe Israel has a right to defend itself against currently ongoing invasion of its sovereign territory. We do, and this member of the silent majority will no longer remain silent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Sean. I'm here to speak in favor of a sister city with Gaza City. Certainly, we also should do everything that we can, including support this effort with the Calpers divestment campaign. If you guys can, you know, continue to lobby and have your voices heard, that would be great. But just to address a few minor points on that this fellow just raised, called the Redwood Peace and Justice Center a hate group, and mentioned something about gaslighting. I think that this is like the epitome of gaslighting. He's literally representing hate himself. Redwood Peace and Justice Foundation never did.
Wait a minute, you're, you're supposed to just address us, please.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm addressing, letting you guys know that, that, that's factually incorrect. Redwood Peace and Justice Coalition is not a hate group. So, so that, that is important to correct the record on that, on that point. Furthermore, the Gaza City municipality, the people that we're contacting, in contact with, are not associated with any other hate groups or designated groups in Palestine. And certainly, we've, we've made, we've made every effort to verify this and make sure of this. Certainly, you guys can do your own research and hope that you do, but all of this brings attention away from what's actually happening. Literally, the, it's, the situation is getting worse and worse. Hundreds of people, hundreds of thousands are being displaced and ending up in Gaza City. You know, Sister City is, is more important now than ever. We recently lost a member of a group that we're partnered with, Gaza City, Gaza Sunbirds, parasyclist Ahmed Al-Dali. And he just died on Monday. So, you know, we've been supporting Gaza Sunbirds, and we even have a Gaza Sunbird solidarity bike ride this June 1st, 3:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
For, for them.
Thank you.
My name is Fareed Almeid. I have some comments to make on your climate projections or proposal. First off, one of the discrepancies I want to identify is that it's, you don't actually address any solutions to the climate crisis going on right now. You just address how to manage it, which is extremely harmful and detrimental. And you didn't even acknowledge solutions as something desirable for you all. So I'd just like to bring that up. Second, you know, I think it's very hypocritical that you all are acting like you actually care about the climate and the planet after you just passed this whole gateway initiative that's going to cause detrimental climate impact to the entire region. The greatest areas causing climate impact are large cities like San Francisco. And instead of working on establishing an eco-city, which is an actual 21st century city design, you all are still in archaic 19th, 20th century mentality, where you're building these out-of-date cities that have been proven to be detrimental to the planet and the environment. As the only Asian-American person in this room, and you all, you know, acknowledging the Asian-American month, you know, and doing all that jazz, I think it'd be beneficial for you all to prove your acclaimed values for equality. And my people, instead of just using nice words, while you're not actually doing anything with your action, something that you could do is make local policies against hate crimes. You know, people are being terrorized in the community, and that's something you all could actually resolve if you had the desire to do so. And on that note, you know, I think it's very hypocritical, everything you said in the Asian heritage speech you made. I would have come up here myself and accepted it on behalf, but, you know, I don't think you all are sincere, because just a few months ago, you all came to my property and terrorized me and committed violent hate crimes against me. And when it was brought up to this new city manager, he said he advocates for violent hate crimes against Asian-Americans and Muslims. And, you know, it's out of time, but.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during oral communications? Okay, is there anybody on Zoom? Oh, all right. And is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on, in oral communications at this time? Okay, so after... Then we'll take people on Zoom. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tricia Murphy, and I'm here because I support a sister city. I, I support divestment. I support people joining BDS, which is a boycott divest movement. There's another new group that's called No Food for Apartheid. And that's, that, if you go online, that'll provide you a list of foods that you can boycott to try to stop Israel from its war crimes. The late scholar Yeshayahu Leibowitz, who Isaac Berlin called the conscience of Israel, warned that if Israel did not separate church and state, it would give rise to corrupt covenant that would warp Judaism into a fascist cult. Leibowitz, who died in 1994, understood that the blind integration of Israeli military, especially after its 67 war that captured the West Bank and East Jerusalem, was dangerous and would lead to the ultimate destruction of democracy. Our situation will deteriorate, it'll degenerate to that of a second Vietnam, the war of constant escalation without prospect of ultimate resolution. He foresaw that Arabs would be the working people, the Jews would be the administrators, the inspectors, the officials, the police, mainly the secret police. An occupying state would necessarily become a secret police state, that with all that implies, to education, free speech, democratic institutions, the corruption characteristic of every colonial regime will prevail. He warned that the rise of verite racism would consume Israeli society. He knew that prolonged occupation would spawn concentration camps for the occupied, and then in his words, Israel would not deserve to exist, and it would not be worthwhile to preserve it. I support a sister city. I support divestment. I, I would urge you, please, what are we waiting for? For every Palestinian to be killed? 16,000 Palestinian kids are going to die in the next 48 hours without food.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom this evening?
Yes, we currently have five hands on Zoom.
Okay. I didn't time it. How many men?
We have time, if we're going with the 15 minutes, we have time for three more speakers.
Thank you.
Just one moment. Ellen, please go ahead.
Hi, City Council, thank you. I'm asking you today to send the letter to Calpers that was drafted for you, demanding that they divest from genocide. Sarah, thank you for being the first to send the letter. As you know, Calpers is the largest public pension fund in the country, and they have $1.4 billion invested in companies that produce weapons and heavy equipment which are being used by Israel to commit genocide in Palestine. Yesterday, the UN warned that 14,000 children were at risk of starvation within the next 48 hours if aid was not immediately provided. That means today, those 14,000 children have approximately 24 hours left to live. Israel has blocked all aid into Gaza since March, with the exception of about five trucks led in this week, two of which were carrying not food but shrouds. The cruelty is the point. I have to believe none of you want any part of that cruelty if you would just take the time to think about it. But I don't believe most of you have taken the time to think about this. You continue to let people spew out bad Israeli Hasbara or propaganda, which almost always doubles as anti-Palestinian hate speech, in this chamber with not a care in the world. And yet you interrupt anyone speaking about Palestine if they miss some decorum rule. Alex, we can hear you on your mic grumbling and whining whenever anyone speaks about Palestine. This latest gap is on the May 7th meeting's YouTube recording at the hour of 1 hour 42-minute mark, if anyone wants to look it up. Any state employee with a pension fund can send this letter to Calpers. Go to divesthumboldt.wordpress.com to find a copy of the letter, as well as the email address to send it to. You will also find draft letters to the cities of Arcata and Eureka, asking them to send the letter to Calpers on behalf of their constituents who do not want our city staff to be invested in a Holocaust. Also, follow us at...
Arcata Arts, please go ahead. Arcata Arts, please unmute yourself. Arcata Arts, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
It's really not very easy to be Jewish in Arcata. The Temple Beth El, the only temple in northwest California, now requires an armed guard just to hold services. Jews are leaving Humboldt County, as we see it, Humboldt County is in danger of reverting to its racist past. And it doesn't have to be that way. So, let me make a few points for you to consider. According to your self-righteous speakers, rootless Jews have been promoted from the Third Reichs Untermannchen, Underhuman, to colonialists and white. Well, I mean, what could be worse than colonialists and white? Israel's tens of thousands of Ethiopian and Yemenite Jews are actually white. Despite 2,000 years of history, or what your Bible, older New Testament might claim, there is no valid Jewish connection to Israel. It's an apartheid state, and its 2 million Arab and Druze citizens who have equal rights don't actually exist. Self-righteously accusing Jews of the worst thing imaginable is a classic blood libel, and that's what you're hearing from your speakers at these things, blood libels. They are lies. They are crafted lies. What always follows, an avalanche of self-righteous lies and an attack on the Jewish community has already begun here in Arcata. We had a pogrom at the university, which everybody denied doing. And then, to make the point about how friendly they were...
Thank you very much for your comments this evening. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's the end of... Isn't that right?
I believe we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard you say we had time for two. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Ryan, please go ahead.
Hello. I was just wanting to share my support for the sister city and for Gaza, Gaza City. I think it's an important thing, definitely, with the insane psychotic attacks and starvation that Israel has been doing. And, yeah, I, you know, recommend you do your efforts to try to work with the group that's opposing the sister city. And don't let any form of conspiracy theory of this being connected to Hamas, or this being supported by it, stop you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have anyone else that can fill the rest of the time?
We're at 14 minutes, so if you want to go further, or I'd recommend going to the consent calendar next. We have about four more on Zoom.
Pardon me? So, we should go on with our meeting. And thank you very much, all the speakers this evening. And so, we'll start in on the consent calendar, which the first item is approve the, to waive reading of the text and consent to read title only for any ordinance on this agenda. B is approve the minutes of the City Council's special meeting, May 7th, 2025. C, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting, May 7th, 2025. D, approve the minutes of the City Council's special meeting of May 8th, 2025. C, bi-weekly report on disbursements. F, approve an amendment to the contract of Phase 1 of the Arcata wastewater treatment facilities upgrade project with Wall &amp; Construction, Inc., in the amount of $750,000, and authorize the city manager execute all applicable documents. G, adopt Resolution Number 245-45, excuse me, 47, dedicating utility easement to Pacific Gas and Electric Company for electrical upgrades for Phase 1 of the Arcata wastewater treatment facility upgrade project, and authorize the city manager execute all documents. H, adopt Resolution Number 245-45 proclaiming June as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, and Pride Month, and authorize the Two-Spirit, Intersex, Inclusive, Progress, Pride flag to be flown on the flagpole at the Arcata City Hall during the month of June. I, approve two annual proclamations in recognition of June as Pride Month, and June 19th as the Juneteenth in the City of Arcata, and add a proclamation for each to the council-approved lists. J, award an annual contract to Nitera in the amount of $75,600 for the fiscal year 2025-26 for quarterly maintenance of aerators in the Arcata wastewater treatment marsh plant oxidation ponds, and authorize the city manager execute current and future contracts. And K, approve sponsorship in the amount of equivalent to the Plaza Event Fee of $1,300 for the Playhouse Arts and the Ferry Festival 2025, Arcata Ferry Festival Plan for the Arcata Plaza on July 27th, 2025. So, are there any items on the agenda the council would like to pull?
Yeah, I'd like to pull Item K, please.
Okay, Item K. Are there any other items? So, maybe we have a motion to approve A through J?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar excluding Item K.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item K, please, Councilmember Matthew.
Alex, did you want to allow for public comment?
Pardon me?
We forgot public comment.
Anyone would like to comment on any of the items on the agenda?
Yes, please.
Please? It's three minutes. No, it's not five, three.
Yeah, well, let me know.
Here, let me, let me...
Don't knock off a couple minutes like we did last time, though.
There's one. Okay.
Are you all set?
Yes, we are. All set for you.
Okay, this is Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment plant, F. I want to point out that this has now gone from $51 million to $67 million in increases, which, I'll give you a little comparison. Morrel Bay started their project just a little bit before us, which is their Phase 1, very similar problem, old plant by the water, sea level rise. And they got their plant done for $79 million, brand-new plant, moved it from the old location up into the hills, so there no longer is any issue with flooding and sea level rise. They had a very active city council and public that pushed back against the contractor and the price increases. So, my disappointment in this process is that you guys have not, like, pushed back at all on any of these cost increases, and it's just totally unacceptable. I would also point out, this is just the start of our costs for this wastewater treatment plant. There's a Phase 2, which, with your own records back two years ago, was another $35 million. So, we're going to be already over $100 million for this plant. And with, you know, Morrel Bay, they have a Phase 2, too. But their Phase 2 is most innovative in the state, where they're actually going to pump their discharge back into the groundwater, so that they're going to be recycling the water for drinking water. Right now, they're discharging it in the ocean, which is clean. And they're also doing things from the standpoint of charging their aquifer so that sea level can't, water can't get into the land. So, I'm just shocked that no one's pushing back on the cost of this project. And, I mean, I just can't understand why no one's asking any questions about all these increases. I mean, that's a huge amount. When Stacy was mayor and basically had our contractor come up here and fill up the first three rows, they were going to keep this project on, pretty much, within cost. I mean, it was going to go maybe to $53 million, and it's gotten way past $53 million. 67 is very close to what Morrel Bay has with a brand-new facility, and it's very similar technology. They have ultraviolet technology in theirs. I'd also point out that they had, like, a major problem that happened when this plant was installed. They had the floods that we've had from these rains, the same thing that's happened with Arcata. They found out that they, you know, the contractor wasn't fulfilling how much the output that could be in this plant, so they got another reduction. That's a question I've asked you several times. What about our discharge, and what happened there? You should be holding their contractors for all this money that we're putting into this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like, please?
My name's Joanne McGarry, and I, too, want to question why this is even on the consent calendar with such a huge amount of money that we're discussing. Everything that Gregory said, I agree with in terms of, why is this cost coming now, the increase of this whole project, the accountability, and no explanation? And nobody on the dais took this off the consent calendar, and I'm amazed. $750,000. That's what they spent on safe parking, if you'll recall. And, you know, we are struggling to make the Calpers payments, and, you know, we want them to divest out of things that are doing harm. But it's just money matters, and we should not be consent-calibrating an item like this at all. It should never have come to this where people in the community are speaking out about this increase. And there needs to be a specific agenda item on matters like this. This is huge.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Didn't we have a whole staff report on this at the last City Council meeting, where we went line by line, and we talked about why we needed something like this? And so, we already had the information, and that's why it's on the consent calendar. Thank you.
But you didn't have public comment.
Okay, so we'll go on with public comment. Yes, please?
Yes. I also agree with my fellow citizens in Arcata that what you're doing is atrocious. It's an abomination upon the creation, shows clear mismanagement and under qualification in your leadership skills and capacities. You know, I already brought up to you months ago that if you're going to be updating a sewage system, you know, you got to get the methane systems that can turn 60% of the biomass and poop into methane. You know, you guys are talking about, oh, you want a renewable energy, you want to be eco-friendly, this and that, yet you're not doing anything to back up your words. It's just a bunch of hypocrisy. And in Asian Heritage Month, you know, I will reference for y'all, it says in the Quran, "The lowest circle of hell is reserved for the hypocrites." So, that's something that y'all should reflect on when you continue with this kind of behavior. You know, this is just completely atrocious. You're spending that much money, get us some of that NASA technology for turning the poop into methane. Let's get some renewable fuel sources out here instead of having to burn down the forest for energy. You know, this is the 21st century, okay? You're not living in the Stone Age no more. We have technology that can resolve these issues, that doesn't have to compete with the environment. It can be beneficial to the environment. So, let's get on this, please. You know, you're hearing it from all the community members. You guys actually got to start looking after the community, instead of us telling you what we need being done, and then y'all just going off on your own, doing whatever you want. You know, that's why people stopped showing up to these meetings, because everybody I've talked to in the community feels like our voices aren't being heard when we're speaking to you all. Everybody. I haven't met a single person in this community that likes any one of you right now, because everybody has the same feeling, that we are speaking what we need done, and you all have your own agenda that you guys are creating behind closed doors and carrying out on behalf of all of us, that have nothing to do with our interests. It has to do with some type of deranged plans you guys have created. And it's just complete insanity. You know, this is mental health illness that we seem to be dealing with here. You know, if y'all want to help the community, you can either get with it and actually start benefiting the community, or step down from the city council so people who actually care about this community can come in here and carry out the interests of our community, instead of just carrying out their own personal agendas on behalf of all of us. None of us agree with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the items that were on the consent calendar? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to the consent calendar items?
No, there's no hands on Zoom, but I didn't manage to capture the result of the vote. I believe I heard all ayes, but I just wanted to confirm that with the council before we moved on.
And is, did we all, did you all agree with...
Yes.
Let's just take the vote all over again. So, it was...
Sarah motioned and I seconded.
Seconded. So, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go on to old business.
I pulled Item K.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, yes.
I can't recuse myself, I think.
Item K. The Ferry Festival? I don't know. The Ferry Festival? No, I think it's the Ferry Festival.
It's a different program. It's up to you to make that determination, but I don't...
It just said Playhouse Arts, so...
Yes, because they are, they are under...
It's a sponsorship for the Ferry Festival.
Okay. Okay, Meredith, please proceed.
Okay, thanks. So, I was in contact with the organizer of the Ferry Festival, and initially, they had wanted to waive the Plaza event fee, but then it was brought up as something else they could do, was to waive the traffic fee. So, I would just like to add that fee included in this item. I'll ask Mayor to speak more about it.
Yeah, it's just, they requested for the city to make a donation in the amount of the Plaza event fees. And so, what was not included there was the $1,275 to shut down the Plaza and provide the traffic control. So, I'd just like to amend the staff report to include an additional $1,275 for the traffic control fee.
And I just would like to speak a huge support to the Ferry Festival. I mean, that was a very small grassroots festival that has turned into a festival that brings over 5,000, 6,000 people to the Plaza. It's beloved. It's a total, very Arcata thing, and really beneficial to Arcata, so...
Okay, thank you. Did you want to make a motion? Okay, we're going to take public comment, but I was going to put a motion on the floor and take public comment.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item K.
And do you want to put the full amount in?
With the additional 12...
With the additional 1275? Thank you. You amended. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a second on that?
I will second.
Thank you. And public comment, please. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about the Ferry Festival and the fees that we're going to waive? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No hands on Zoom.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We do not have old business tonight, so we'll go on to new business. Consider adopting Number 245-46, Committing Community Development Block Grant. That's Community Development Block Grant Program Income Loan Funds to Rogers Garage Affordable Housing Project. And we'll have a staff report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to update, before I start with the staff report, I wanted to update the recommendation. Tonight, I'll give a brief staff report, but I wanted to ask the council to take public comment, open the hearing and take public comment, but then defer any kind of deliberations or, you know, questions until we have the opportunity to hold a new hearing on June 4th. So, I wanted to get that recommendation out right from the start. So, for this item, the Community Development Block Grant Program is, which is what the CDBG stands for, we're required to hold a public hearing before we apply for funds through that program. And so, tonight, I want to talk a little bit about process. Again, I want you to open the public hearing, take public comments, and actually, the recommendation is updated since this was created earlier today. We're not actually required to continue the hearing because we're going to notice the hearing anew. So, I want to talk a little bit about the process. I know it's been a little confusing for folks in the community. Maybe it's a little confusing even just reading the staff report. So, I want to lay this out before the public comment on the project so that folks have a grounding for their comments. The planning, the City Council has already taken a few steps in funding this project. Excuse me. And we'll go into a little bit of detail about those processes later, but this is sort of the third step. So, the council's looked at permanent local housing allocation funding for pre-application work, that they did pre-development work for, use that money for pre-development work. And then, more recently, the competitive permanent local housing allocation... And then more recently, the competitive permanent local housing allocation funds were applied for and were won. And the city council approved that, that application as well. So where we're at tonight is looking at allocating Community Development Block Grant funding for the project, again, for moving the project forward into construction. The specific allocation would be for acquisition of the property and I'll talk a little bit about that. But this follows from your scoping hearing that you had on February 19th. CDBG requires that you have scoping hearings and then an application hearing. This is the beginning of that application hearing process. At this point, we're looking at, for this particular application, allocating that program income that we have for general administration, and that's approximately $300,000 that we have in local program income. Those are funds that the city has in its accounts. We're not actually applying for a competitive grant, but the CDBG program requires us to go through this application process to access those, those funds. And so we'd be looking for allocating about $300,000 for program income, general administration, and then about a million dollars for the Rogers Garage project. It's been a lot of talking today and apparently my voice is a little hoarse as a result. I've got water, thank you very much, Mayor. So that this hearing process, as I mentioned before, will be continued. We'll have another noticed hearing on June 4th where you can finalize the discussions on this meeting. But in terms of the process extending beyond this, there'll also be a design review hearing before the planning commission. So there's a land use entitlement process that's going on and the city council is also looking at the funding process. That's what's before you tonight. So parallel processes that, that will ultimately merge at the end with the development of the project if approved by the planning commission and the city council. I want to indicate at this point too, that that design review process is a discretionary hearing that the planning commission will take. The planning commission makes a decision, but the appeal authority is the city council. And so as you get into reviewing the, the funding for this project, I also want you to be cognizant and aware of making statements that may be prejudicial towards any kind of appeal hearing that may come forward. And so staff and your legal counsel will help you to, to navigate that. But it's just important not to, you know, put forward statements that indicate a bias towards the planning decision when you haven't heard that planning decision. It's also important to note that these, these areas of, you know, subject matter kind of overlap a lot. You're looking at allocating funding for a project that is also having a simultaneous land use entitlement process. You're, you've got in your packet the designs that are going through that design review process. And so I want to recognize that there is a lot of overlap. I know that there are people in the hearing tonight that wish to speak about both aspects. And so I just want you to be cognizant of the, the sort of Venn diagram and the overlap there and not to prejudice yourself if you do sit as an appeal body for that land use Importantly for tonight, there's a SEQA exemption that's been put forward in the staff report. And again, I'm going to ask that you not delve into the SEQA exemption at all. We've received input from a local law firm that has several questions that we haven't had the opportunity to, to inform the council on or to dig into detail and develop responses for. Ultimately, you know, based on the information that's in the, the public record, we'll make a formal and final decision about the SEQA process that the city needs to go through. But at this point, you know, we are considering a SEQA exemption. That will be considered at, again, at a later date. And then just, I touched quickly on the previous funding commitments, but, and I'll, I'll talk about the SEQA determinations that were made in those previous funding commitments. But the city council has made those two PLHA funding commitments earlier this year indicating a desire to move forward with this project as part of our affordable housing portfolio. In that scoping hearing on February 19th, we did indicate that we have about $1.5 million in program income, those local funds that are held. With resolution 245-46, which again, we're going to ask that you defer making a decision on that, we'd be allocating about $1.3 million of that to the administration and general administration and to the project itself. Of that approximately $800,000 will be for the project. And then there'll be some money that will be going towards general administration and activity delivery to, to bring the project to fruition. So there's about that million dollars to the loan project, 330 for general admin. And then under a separate hearing item, we're going to ask that the balance of that, approximately $200,000, be added to our open CDBG grant that has an economic development, business assistance and micro enterprise loan program so that we can support more loans in the community using that economic development program. Again, we'll bring that back under a separate hearing item. Again, this project, the part of the purpose for tonight's hearing and the reason why we'll, we'll hold additional public hearings on the funding is to provide additional project review. I'd mentioned the planning commission will have its design review process, but the neighborhood has been keenly interested in this project, really for the last 20 years. There have been proposals on this site and the neighbors have a lot of information, local information and knowledge about the site. And so it'll be important to take their input and considerations as we're moving through this process. This design review process, however, will be completely separate from your decision. Lastly, with regard to the SEQA process, you know, I mentioned that the permanent local housing allocation that was approved in November of 2023 included a common sense exemption. At that time, we didn't have a formal project description. We didn't know exactly what the impact on the environment would be and we were just funding the preliminary work to bring that, those details to the fore. And so your, your council adopted a common sense exemption from SEQA at that point. In May 2024, again, we did not have a formal project description that the council could consider at that point. And so again, we adopted a common sense exemption, recognizing that the future decision would be rendered on SEQA. I'd mentioned also that at this point, we're considering at the very least a Class 32 categorical exemption. That's for infill projects and this project meets those infill requirements based on the public record to date. We do want to continue this topic so that we can more formally respond to the letters that we received and provide additional evaluation and update to council before you make a decision on that. I'll ask that our legal team provide any input on, you know, when that decision will be made. And I'd ask, you know, Newby to, to speak to that when I close. So this hearing was a noticed public hearing. I'm going to ask that you open the public hearing, allow people to speak on the project, and then close the public hearing. And I know I'm sounding a little redundant, but I want to make sure it's abundantly clear that council will not be deliberating at this point and we'll give you that opportunity to do so when we open the new hearing that will be separately publicly noticed for June 4th. With that, I'd like to ask our city attorney who's joining us online to fill in any gaps that she feels are necessary or address any questions the council has on the SEQA in particular.
Thank you. Thank you, David. The only thing I'd like to reiterate again is the item is being presented to council for, as a, to lay the groundwork as we are moving forward and evaluating comments and correspondence that have been received in the last few days regarding the project, particularly as it relates to the SEQA component for the exemption. So we are working through that and it is our plan to bring this back for your meeting, your first meeting in June. With that being said, again, staff's recommendation is for the council not to take any action tonight, open it up to receive public comment and input, and we will be renoticing this entire item for a future date to ensure that we've adequately addressed any of those issues and concerns that have been raised in the last few days. And I can answer any questions of the council now.
Thank you. So with that, I would like to open the public hearing.
Can I, can I just mention before you do also that we have representatives from Danco here as well? And typically with these types of issues, we give the applicant the first turn at the mic.
All right. So the applicant would like to come, you'll have three minutes to speak, and thank you.
Thanks, David. Good evening to the council members and the staff and the members of the community. My name is Mackenzie Dibble and I'm a project manager with Danco Communities. I'm here tonight with my colleague, Chris Dart. And we just wanted to say that we really appreciate the support of the city on this project and to bring affordable housing to the community. As David mentioned, we're not here to talk about the design of the project, but we'll be back for that at a later date. We just wanted to say that we're here for any questions that the council, staff or community has that you feel we would be fit to address. This project, if it were to go into construction, would leverage tens of millions of dollars for the community to benefit from. And the 1.3 million in proposed program income that's being heard tonight would make us much more competitive for that financing and bringing tax credits and potentially bonds and other state resources into the community to benefit us. So just wanted to say that and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey, Farida Ahmed again. Yeah, I'm very opposed to this whole low-income housing in Bayside. You know, I live in Bayside, that's my community you're talking about there. We don't need any ghettos being brought up in the community. We're Potomac, Maryland, Humboldt County. We're not some type of Laurel County, PG County. We don't need y'all setting up the projects out in the nice neighborhoods, you know, especially right across the street from the school. You know, what you trying to do? Bring some drug dealers out here? Bring some pimps and hoes out there? You know, what are they going to do with the children? We don't need none of that. You know, and I'm all for helping out low-income people. Go give that millions of dollars to those people instead of just giving it to these corporations. They don't have to be low-income anymore. Y'all could start up a program that supports entrepreneurship in the community. There's a lot of people struggling out here right now. They don't need a place just where they're going to be promoted for their struggles and once they reach past a certain income status, they'll be out in the streets again? No. They need support from their government officials. They need to have it so they don't got to keep living in poverty anymore. You know, and that's like the, the garage right now, that's where people work out. Where are people supposed to get their exercise? Huh? You know, that's where the ribbon dancers are at. You know, where are they supposed to be doing their, practicing their ribbon dancing? You know, you want to help out the Bayside community, go build a community center for us over there. You know, you guys keep making all these changes to the community and yet most of the people in the community aren't even allowed to vote in Arcata. You know, you guys just put in this whole huge roundabout that most of the community member was completely opposed to instead of doing things we actually need, like putting in some sidewalks on Jacoby Creek Road so people don't got to keep risking their lives every time they want to take a stroll in the forest. We don't need any projects out there. We don't need any ghetto out there. We do need help making sure the low-income people don't stay low-income. So put that money and give it to the low-income people instead of just giving it into some corporate fat cats' pockets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Mary and Amber, I live on Highland and I have some things to say about the immediate neighborhood. First of all, that land has not been adequately cleaned. Rogers Garage dropped a lot of toxic materials on that property and apparently that's the reason that this has been dragging for so long. There's no point in building on toxic, on toxic land. Aside from that, I have to thank the town for repaving, finally repaving Old Arcata Road. It's great, but it's still pretty crowded. Even with the turning lane that goes into Jacoby Creek School, it's still crowded. The cafe and the school adds a lot of parking to the area. Highland is parked quite a bit up around the curve now. It's going to get a lot worse very soon if this, if this kind of project goes through. It's, it's a, it's a family neighborhood and, and it's a, it's a school neighborhood and it's already a dangerous place for children to cross the street. And you're talking about adding 45 units and only 45 spaces for cars to park. That's not enough for 45 units. And 45 units is too many units in, in that space. It's, it's, it's already, it's already bursting. I mean, you know, you're going to have to put traffic lights in there and who, who has traffic lights around here? It just, it just is going to change the character of the area and it's going to be very hard to get in and out. And I don't see why we need to do that. I mean, if, if you do, I mean, I'm all for infill housing. I think we need, we need housing, but 45 units is way too many in a space, in that space. And, and again, the bottom line is you've got to clean up or somebody's got to clean up that space, that, that land. It's, it's toxic. It's, it's not a safe piece of ground. Please, start at the bottom. Start with the dirt, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
It's like I picked the right night to come to my first meeting. My name's Kevin. I live on Highland, right around the corner from Miriam. And I recognize that the plan has changed, so some of the comments that I prepared may be irrelevant. But what's clear to me is that this is a complex project, a complex issue with many overlapping layers. But like Miriam, I want to make comment about my concern around the safety issues that this project raises. And in particular, the SEQA exemption for skipping environmental review entirely that has been on the agenda but may now change. As Mr. Loy said, there's a Venn diagram here, but two things that are at the center of that Venn diagram are the toxicity in the soil at Rogers Garage and the pressure to use community block grant, grant funds. Recognize there's an issue around using those before they expire or complicate our ability to be funded by these programs. Let me just take a moment to remind us all what is in the soil at 1622 Old Arcata Road. There is lead at 390 micrograms per kilogram, which is dramatically over safe levels. There is cadmium. There is arsenic, benzene, and at least eight other toxic metals, many in concentrations 100 times above safety limits. So if a project like this is to proceed, much like Miriam said, it seems absolutely essential that we do so in a way that does not skip any environmental reviews and does not shortchange the concerns that we all have about the health of the children who live and go to school in this neighborhood. I'm, I'm in support of extended housing and expanding our community, but to do so while disturbing a deeply toxic construction site and spreading that toxicity around the neighborhood seems like a grave mistake.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
I would like to talk a little bit more about the financing of, of this project and also of all Danco projects from the standpoint that, you know, I've brought up a couple times, like, for example, does Danco pay taxes on any of these large developments? Which is a pretty important question for you to know and also the community because, you know, we have like a $32 million deficit for our pension here. And if we're building all these low-income housing and they're not even generating taxes for, to pay for all our services, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be in trouble down the road. So I think three and a half years ago that I brought this up from the standpoint that Danco, Chris Dart gave a pretty good presentation to Ollie at Cal Poly. And I wanted to follow up where, you know, it was spelled out to the council and nobody seemed to be too interested in knowing all the details. And, you know, it, it's a lot of, you, you've given them, I think, $180,000 not too long ago. This is 1.3 million. So we didn't, we... So we didn't, we really need to know the details of how these are being financed. I mean, it could be great, it could be, it could be somebody like private equity love that's involved with this, because that's what I'm reading in the New York Times, that private equity is really getting involved in these, these low-income projects because of the tax write-off. And I think Chris Dart, three and a half years ago, touched on some folks are getting some really large tax breaks, and then they're giving money to Danco to develop these projects. So I'm just saying, we need to know what is going on with all the, the details of these so we have a clear understanding. Because, you know, other things with, with private equity, when we've seen in 2008 what they've done, buying up all our, pretty much most of our housing at cut-rate prices, and then after they were done there, they moved on to Europe and, and Spain. That was in last week's newspaper. Now, now they're, they're in low-income housing. So I definitely wanna know whether they're part of this. Maybe they are, maybe they're not. So I'd also point out that, you know, there's, we have some pretty big projects with Cal Poly, Craftsman Mall, and we're gonna be connecting that to the wastewater treatment plant. This is another one. I've, I've talked to like some engineers that we never, no one really calculated what our wet season outflow was, and, and these spills that we've been having that we can't even keep up with what's our rainwater in the season. Now we're going to be, you know, these hookups with large numbers of people. We really need to know what's going on so that we don't get fined when we have Cal Poly hooked up and we're not capable of processing all that waste. So that never was spelled out. You know, it was, it was a, it was a dry season calculation, not a wet season.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, please.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Yes. I'm a resident of Bayside, up of Highland overlooking the school. And I have, my main concerns are the safety. And so my questions, two questions are, what is known now of conditions of soil contamination? Because that seems to be a little bit under, not quite understood. The second is, what is planned for more testing of soil contamination and removal? So I'm, I'm in favor and requesting this, this, the city do some more initial study. I'm, 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 I'm just really demanding almost the connection between the school and the city to communicate, because if there's any work done, there's, there's a lot of dust contamination, and there's just a lot that we know of that's under that surface. So I think for the safety and the health of the school, there needs to be adequate communication at all times. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please, ma'am.
Members of the city council, my name is Michelle Warner, and I live a half a block away from the Roger's Garage site. I have three children, and I work at Jacoby Creek Elementary School. I stand before you today with a simple question. Are you willing to poison our children for the sake of grant funding? The Roger's Garage site is just not, is not just contaminated, it's toxic. The soil contains lead, cadmium, arsenic, and benzene at levels of up to 100 times safety limits. These aren't just numbers on a page. They're poisons that cause cancer, asthma, brain damage, birth defects, and those are just to name a few. This site is directly across the street from Jacoby Creek Elementary School, where 450 children, mine included, play every day. Any remediation plan would send toxic dust into these, into the air that these children breathe and onto the surfaces that they touch. If you approve this project, you're telling us that meeting housing quotas matters more than our children's health. You're telling us that grant deadlines outweigh cancer risks. If this project is allowed to move forward, my family's health is at risk. You can still pivot and stop allocating money to a city planning decision that causes harm, not builds living spaces for community members. I urge you to vote no on all three motions set forth by David Loyah at this meeting tonight or in the future. No, no, no. Do not allow an infill exemption to CEQA 15532. I'm actually very confused as how you can even propose such an exemption on the Roger's Garage site. I ask that you require an initial study and mitigation measures before any funding or approvals, and especially before an infill exemption. The record to date clearly states this site has toxic levels of heavy metals in the soil, putting at risk both air and water quality. I urge you to vote no when asked to give more money to this funding this project. And also, I ask you to say no at another public hearing on June 4th to dole out more block grant funding to this project. I beg you, city council members, to dig deeper into the history, the records, the data, and the soil testing analyses of this site. And do not let Danco dig. Please, it's not too late. Vote against these motions. Find housing solutions that don't come at the cost of our children's futures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Thank you.
Hi, guys. I want to say thanks for Dave's efforts because, for the local coastal program, because I have recently had a project. It was, it was through the county, but they have a local coastal. And the, it went so much easier when we're trying to get a, a permit rather than trying to deal with a huge agency. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be helpful. So anyway, people, you know, people hear about CEQA, we've been talking about CEQA, and a lot of times you think this is NIMBY blocking, you know, that we're just using this one little lizard or something to, to block. But CEQA was created exactly for complicated situations like this, exactly for, like Roger's Garage. And using this exemption, I know now we're, most likely, this is gonna be at another hearing, but, you know, using the exemption here, which, by the way, is the resolution as proposed, had the money, had the loan, but it also had a CEQA exemption, asking you guys to do a CEQA exemption. But, so if those two were in the future, that is, it contradicts the established CEQA case law, you know? And I, and I, again, I encourage you guys to read Jason Holder's letter. It's really well-written, and it's, let's do that before we go down a slippery, slimy slope on that one. Oh, it's not kinetic season yet. Okay, sorry. Let's see, so, you know, the exemption is basically going to be relying on, I wanna be clear about this, it's relying on the plan that everybody keeps not talking about or talking about, the supposed approved cleanup plan that Chris Dart told the council last year when you guys approved that loan, that we have a plan in place. They failed, and then Dave also doubled down and said in the staff report that we have a plan in place. Well, people failed to mention that's a 20-year-old plan. It's a 20-year-old plan for cleanup, for mediation, from 2005. And is that a problem? Shouldn't be, right? Well, actually, the site conditions have changed. We've identified, we, I say we, it has been identified that there's a, a wet lens on the site, new conditions. We've also found that there's a perennial spring, an annual perennial spring that puts onto the site, this is historic spring, puts on the site 4.5 acre-feet of water. So there's some, there's definitely some changes. Also, I'm gonna run out of time, but I'll just leave it at that. We've got, there's more, folks. Yeah, there's definitely more. So I, I recommend do not do the CEQA exemption, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor Stillman, can I just remind you two, to just remind the, the audience for decorum and not to applause or boo or whatever the case may be and react to speakers?
Yes, well, they've been clapping, so it's okay. But it is true, we do ask that to confine yourself. Do you wanna speak to that?
So just to be clear, it's not that we are opposed to clapping, but there might be people, I'm sure there are people in the audience with differences of opinions. And so if the majority of people are feeling one way and clapping for that, it might make other people who have a difference of opinion feel like they're unable to speak. And this is a public forum, and every person should feel safe to express their opinions. And so we just act that you don't react, good or bad, to what you hear so that people feel free and safe to speak. Thank you.
That's a contradiction.
Thank you. So our next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kari Samalaska. My husband, David Johnson, and I live directly next door to the proposed Roger's Garage project. As a matter of fact, our master bedroom is probably about 50 feet away from the construction site. So when I hear talk about asking for an exemption from CEQA, it troubles me a lot. Because I know when the first bit of soil is turned over in there, with the prevailing winds that come through that area, it's going to come directly into my house. I'm very worried about the children at the school, paramount issue. My husband and I are senior citizens. That kind of toxicity coming into my house that close by creates a really big problem for me. So I'm here really to ask you, please, think about that CEQA exemption, that not having thorough cleanup, not looking at how it's gonna be done, is gonna create some lasting problems for some of us. We have lived on that property for over 30 years. It was our retirement dream, it's where we thought we were going to finish out our time. It's getting harder every day to look at it that way, because we don't know what's gonna happen because of this. The second thing that I'd like to ask tonight is, just for some clarification, I guess, Mr. Loyah, this would come from you, on the resolution that was put forth today, there is a line item in here in the monies to be allocated for acquisition of real property. And I think it would be great if we could get some explanation for that, because as I've looked into it, the only explanation I can find is that's actually purchasing of property. There's no other, there's no other definition for acquisition of real property. And we wanna be good neighbors. We believe in infill housing, we know the need for housing exists, we wanna work with whomever is developing this. But I'm in question now, is this gonna be Danco owning this property, or is this gonna be the city of Arcata owning this property? Because somewhere on a line item here, there's $819,000 being put forward for the acquisition of real property. And I have to assume that it's to purchase that property, because the only people eligible to receive the CDBG grant money is either a city that falls under the size and scope of Arcata or a nonprofit organization, neither of which I believe Danco qualifies for. So it would be really helpful as those of us that are deeply involved in this project could understand who owns that property, who are we working with, and how can we make this a more readily accessible project going forward for us? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Finley Rae Klein. I'm in 7th grade at Jacoby Creek School. I have some concerns about this building project and the chemicals and toxins it may release and threaten me, my family, my friends, and my school. I beg you, please reconsider on this, on this project and make sure it is safe for the children and all the people living near this building site. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yes, ma'am?
Of course, I have to follow the fantastic child. My name is Sarah. I also have children who attend Jacoby Creek School, and I live in Bayside. And I just will not reiterate what people have already said, but I don't support this project, given the use of the infill exemption. I recognize you will be doing a consideration of that later, but if you look at the exemption, it doesn't allow for projects that will have an impact on traffic and the environment, which this project will have. And there's a variety of other concerns around traffic. I drive my kids to school every day on Old Arcata Road, and there simply isn't space there for another 50 to 60 cars traveling. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry, and I've been following this a little bit and am very confused about money that was granted to Danco for some cleanup, and then it was not done or whatever. But this particular plot of land, historically, I've heard neighbors and other people who've been here a long time just talking about, it's truly a toxic, superfund-y type of site that we really should be looking at very seriously about not building anything there till we really do the due diligence to clean it up completely and thoroughly and effectively, and then we can talk about what to do with that space. So rushing into much-needed housing, this is maybe not the place. And I think about the North Coast Environmental Center that had the plot of land over there on 9th Street where it burned down when the, whatever the fire was back before my time here. And it's still being toxically investigated and a process going. So I, I really do think we don't need another Love Canal in Humboldt County. We really need to think differently about this particular plot of land and particular set of monies and particular people who want to develop it. It really sounds nightmarish and not good, and I really think you've heard from so many people who are gonna be so affected by this in so many ways. So think of the people, the people of your community, and when you're talking about projects like this that are gonna have such an impact environmentally, socially, climate-wise, whatever, educationally, this is, this is all wrong. No Love Canal in Humboldt.
Thank you very much for your comment. Please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillors, staff. My name is Justin Renier. I also have children at the Jacoby Creek School. I wanted to first off, thank you for your patience. I, you know, I have a master's in transportation, I work for a policy agency within the state of California. Folks often come up, and we understand that it is difficult to hear your fellow citizens' disapproval for you making the best effort that you can to move things forward. I wanna start by recognizing that there are legitimate needs here. There are legitimate needs around cleanup, there are legitimate needs around housing, there are doubly legitimate needs around affordable housing. This, as going forward, and no disrespect intended to the professionals that have worked on it, I think is premature. I would urge us to take a pause. I don't think there's any negatives or downsides to taking such a pause. We have a very, very engaged parent association, several parent associations at Jacoby Creek School. We would be more than happy to work with you to understand what we are trying to accomplish here and ensure that we are not raising the concerns that have been dealt with by previous This, this is not the way, I don't think. All due respect intended. I think that the, the level of engagement here is not, is not gonna win any favors, and maybe to the direct interest of the folks here, is not gonna win any votes. So to the extent that we can take a pause, to the extent that we can work together, we know that there's, this is gonna be a CEQA project, we know that there's gonna need to be, I don't think there's any way of making a negative declaration, but at least a mitigated negative declaration, there will have to be community involvement. Running this through at the pace that it's going, with the level of outreach that we have attained so far, I think is, you know, you, you can move at the speed of trust. And I'm not sure that that trust has been established by the efforts thus far. Again, no disrespect intended to the professionals here. I understand that we're all working, you know, limited bandwidth and unlimited challenges. But we would really like to work with rather than have something done to. And I think that that's something that is after everybody's best interests. So I won't reiterate the comments of my friends and neighbors and, and co-parents and everything else that I've spoken before. But do wanna thank you for your time and your attention, and hope that we can take a step back. We don't need to do this in this meeting. We can engage and move forward together. Thank you.
And thank you. So I would like to ask, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening before we go to Zoom? Nobody? Okay, asking one more time. Well, thank you all for speaking at this time, and then we'll move on to Zoom now.
Call-in user one, please go ahead. Call-in user one, please unmute yourself. Sorry, call-in user one, it looks like you're still muted. Can you please unmute yourself? Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next one. Lisa Brown, please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Lisa Brown from Arcata, Bayside. Last year, your council approved funding to Danco Properties to facilitate planning for the development of Rogers Garage. As a community member who provided a comment at the hearing a year ago, I remember the council assuring us that environmental review would be conducted before further action is taken to move the project forward. This followed testimony on the history of the contamination of the site, as well as local knowledge of Danco sandblasting lead-based paint off of the Quonset hut across from Jacoby Creek School. As a community member, I feel that the city should look elsewhere to spend these particular CDBG funds. Are you being asked to provide over a million dollar in funds to acquire perhaps a non-existent property, as is written in the resolution that you were asked to approve tonight? Or are you essentially being asked to give to Dan Johnson, Danco, KD Investments, whomever, a million-plus dollars in order to transfer Rogers Garage from one corporate entity to another? Is this more correct? Do you know, as I surely do not? It cannot be for the project, as stated by David Lawyer, as there is no project at this time. I must ask the council, this money, this million dollars, where is it going? Where does the money end up? Where is the accountability for these funds? Are we paying someone a million dollars for something that he, they already own? Is this what a corporate grab is in Arcata? I am completely confused. I have no question that the Dan Johnson, Danco, KD Investments corporate entity can transfer this property from one corporate entity to another corporate entity all on its own. In the future, providing the Rogers Garage project continues to move forward following the completion of all the environmental assessments and studies needed for this project, and the proper CEQA process and community outreach, a more productive and more community-minded CDBG expenditure would be to help facilitate the remediation of the Brownfield site. And I do mean proper CEQA process, including an initial study to determine if an EIR will be needed to identify and mitigate the potential and likely environmental impacts this project is likely to impose on this area, an area already deeply challenged with traffic and parking issues. In addition to the car-related problems that are well-established, there are unknown impacts to air quality, water quality, wetlands, off-site migration of heavy metals and petroleum contaminants, and the possible health impacts to students at Jacoby Creek School.
Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ellen, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I also have a student, not at Jacoby Creek, but at a school nearby. So I'm glad I stayed on for this agenda item. I'm also, you might not believe it, but I am an environmental professional. I have a master's degree in everything. And I have over twenty years of professional experience, a lot of that being in CEQA and environmental analysis. And, you know, no offense to any of the other environmental professionals that worked on this, but I, and again, I haven't, you know, like, read the general plan in a long time. But I don't see how this is exempt from CEQA. I just, given the public concern, given the contamination of the site, I read in the agenda summary that there's, you know, the Water Board has a cleanup plan, and like, that's great, but that's not a substitute for a CEQA analysis. It's just not. And I'm really concerned about the city council trying to push this through when there's such grave concerns about the health and safety of the people around this site. So I just wanted to add my voice to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next person on Zoom, please.
Call-in user one, please go ahead. Call-in user one, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, council members and staff. This is Kathleen Stanton, and I'd like to say it firstly, I agree with Attorney Jason Holder that this proposed housing development at the former Rogers Garage site is not exempt from CEQA. And therefore, the city should do an initial study to determine possible adverse impacts to the residents and schoolchildren nearby. Also, I have followed the various proposed developments for this property over the past twenty-five years, read the soil and water studies, and communicated with the regional water quality control board, and followed their requirements to remediate the site. There is much documented public controversy surrounding this property that makes any future development there subject to CEQA. Secondly, the proposed forty-five units with only forty-three parking spaces is insufficient in a neighborhood that shares street parking with Jacoby Creek Elementary School. Throughout the school year, parents and students and staff attend evening meetings, sports events, and school programs that require parking that would be taken up by apartment residents. Generally, families have two working parents who each have a car, and therefore, forty-five units requires ninety onsite parking spaces, not forty-three. We have no mass transit in Bayside. Without sufficient off-street parking, we will have serious neighborhood impacts with traffic and access to the school. Lastly, I'd like to mention that the point three-six acre property next door to Rogers Garage is for sale for four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and should be purchased by Dan Johnson for his housing project. He could build on clean soil rather than contaminated soil, and simply cap his one-point-six acre site, and provide plenty of parking for his apartments, and possibly a dog park, like the Little Lake Housing Development will have, and maybe even a solar field. I'd like to see the CDBG loan goes towards this acquisition as well, and make a much better project with far less impact and cleanup costs and exposure to toxic soils. There are better alternatives to the currently proposed dense housing development with fifty-three apartments, three-story tie, that I hope the city will seriously consider. For instance, how about reducing the size of the dog park at the Little Lake Development, which I understand is many acres, and add more apartments there, and reduce the number of apartments in Bayside so it fits better. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Megan, please go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name is Megan Davis. I'm a resident of Bayside. I have two children who attend Jacoby Creek School. Aside from the overwhelming concern of the toxicity of the soil at the Rogers Garage site, the area around Jacoby Creek School is already extremely congested, particularly during the morning commute. It is near impossible to make a left-hand turn from Highland onto Old Arcata Road. Additional traffic from the Rogers Garage project would create a great strain in the community. There's also a serious lack of parking around Jacoby Creek School. While the sidewalk project along Old Arcata Road has greatly improved safety, it has taken away a great deal of parking. While the Rogers Garage plans include parking, it does not seem adequate for a building of that size. I understand the need for more affordable housing, but this is not the right spot. We need to keep our kids safe, and Bayside is simply too small for a building of this size. Thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anon, please go ahead. We can hear you.
Hi, I'm another Bayside resident, and I don't want to play like devil's advocate here or anything, but I kind of am, in a way, in support of the project. Like, I do think that extensive, like, environmental review and cleanup, that all needs to happen. But I think that this community, in some ways, does need more housing. I think the school could benefit from more diversity and more different types of people in our community. And I feel like a lot of people are like, we want to support the working poor, we want to help people, but, oh, we don't want them here. So I think I do see, like, the environmental aspect concerns, but I'm like, if that's appropriately addressed, and the site is cleaned up, then we're making good use of a site that was once toxic. But the proper steps for that definitely need to be taken. But I think that working families need a place to live, and this is a beautiful community for people to live in. And I think we should be open to sharing that, and not just having Bayside and Jacoby Creek be this exclusive community where only people of a certain means can live. Because so many of the kids that attend the school don't even live in the district, because there's nowhere for families to live over here. So I definitely think that the concerns are valid, but I think there's two sides to every story and to every situation. So I definitely think that there's merit to the project as well, and I haven't really heard anybody speak on that. So I think definitely the proper steps need to be taken to protect people's health, protect the environment. But also, we should consider, like, we need jobs, we need housing, we need, this brings good, blue-collar jobs to our community. Like, these are all things that are also important. So I think that if the necessary steps are taken to clean up the site, and to move it forward in a safe way, it might take a little bit longer, it might, but I think there's merit to this project, and I did just want to speak a little bit about some possible benefits of this going forward for our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
A Bennett, please go ahead. A Bennett, please unmute yourself. Can you try speaking? It looks like you are unmuted. Okay. I can't hear the speaker, and there are no other hands raised.
So maybe they don't have their volume up. But, so, do you have anyone else on Zoom waiting to speak? Or is that the last person? Well, I'm sorry, their voices aren't heard, but I would like to thank everyone tonight for their comments and for their thoughts, and we appreciate it. And so we're going to close with that, the public hearing. And staff will take an opportunity. You want to speak to, when you're going to follow up on a public hearing separately? You want to continue?
Yeah, I don't really have anything else to add to the staff report, but folks who, you know, didn't get a chance to speak tonight will be able to speak at that next public hearing. We're trying to ensure that there's, you know, adequate time for the community to, you know, be informed of the project, for the council to consider their comments. And I guess I would also say, for folks that are interested, they should feel free to reach out to me if they have questions about, you know, the environmental work that's being done, or the project overall.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So with that, we can go on to our next item under new business. And that is considered the introduction of ordinance number fifteen-seventy-nine, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, adding Article eleven to chapter or title four, chapter two, making it unlawful for any person in the city to sell, offer, distribute, or provide nitrous oxide to any person. Could we have a staff report on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor Stillman. I just want to say a few words. First of all, the recommendation is that the council introduce, we introduce ordinance fifteen-seventy-nine and make it unlawful for any person in the city to sell, offer, distribute, or provide nitrous oxide to any person. Nitrous oxide is commonly used as a medical anesthetic and propellant in whipped cream dispensers, and is increasingly misused as a recreational inhalant. Its unregulated sale misuse, particularly by youth, presents an urgent public health concern. And this ordinance is aimed at addressing the availability and misuse of nitrous oxide by establishing a comprehensive regulations for its sale, possession, and distribution in the city. The council has acknowledged this public health problem in the past, and has requested that staff bring such an ordinance for consideration. This ordinance reinforces the city's commitment to protecting the health and safety of its residents by limiting access to substances known to cause harm when misused. I'd like to say that I have Brianna Sherlock and Courtney Angelo here from County Public Health tonight. They've been a huge help in putting this ordinance together, and provide, and they will be providing a presentation regarding the health impacts. And I will say that we've been working with the other cities in Humboldt County, and the county that are also expecting to, we're also expecting that they will introduce similar ordinances, so that there's a uniform approach throughout the county. So this ordinance is expected to close existing legal loopholes by establishing a local prohibition on the sale, offer, distribution, or provision of nitrous oxide and related devices, except in cases where the product is used in food products as a propellant, administered for legitimate medical or dental purposes, dispensed by a licensed pharmacy or pharmacist, or distributed by a wholesaler or manufacturer regulated under specific codes. Variations of the ordinance will be treated as misdemeanors, subject to penalties, including fines or jail time, and may be enforced through nuisance abatement or administrative citation processes already established in the Arcata Municipal Code. This ordinance is modeled on similar efforts in other California cities and counties, and is intended to protect the community health without placing an undue burden on businesses engaged in lawful sales of unrelated product. If this ordinance, after being introduced, is approved, the ordinance would be brought back for adoption by the council at its next regular scheduled meeting. We do have our city attorney on the line, if you have any questions about enforcement or any of those aspects. But with that, I will turn it over to Brianna and Courtney to share their presentations.
Great. Thank you so much, Merritt. I'm very happy to be here tonight with you all. As Merritt said, I'm Brianna Sherlock. I'm the manager for the Healthy Communities and Wake Division with the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health. I'm also a resident of Arcata and mother of two children.
Hi, I don't know if you can hear me. My name is Courtney Angelo. I am Health Education Specialist in Healthy Communities Division with the Nicotine and Tobacco Prevention Program. So, thank you. I stated a little bit earlier just now, nitrous oxide is a colorless gas item, which is hard to detect. It is used in the healthcare industry for sedation and pain relief. It is also used in the culinary industry. It is compressed gas to make whipped cream. And it is used for recreational illicit use for inhaling NO to get high. It causes feelings of euphoria, giddiness, sedation, numbness, confusion, and dizziness. There are quite a few effects, so I'm not going to run through them all. But the short-term effects of recreational NO use includes dizziness, lightheadedness, blurred vision, sweating. And then there are quite a few, again, long-term effects. Again, not going to read them all, but I want to point out, our memory loss, vitamin B-12 depletion, which could lead to potential brain and nerve damage. It could lead to psychological dependency, also potential birth defects if used during pregnancy.
So some of you may be familiar with nitrous oxide. I think what most people kind of associate with nitrous are the little Whippet canisters, which are what this first photo is up here, the small metal cartridges that contain compressed nitrous oxide gas. There are also, oops, sorry, there are also crackers, which are used to crack the canisters in order to release the nitrous oxide gas. And then more and more, what we are seeing in the field are tanks of nitrous, and these are like, all the way from extra-small tanks all the way up to extra-large tanks. And retailers just have these available in plain sight, and Courtney will be talking a little bit more about that. And these tanks dispense a steady stream of nitrous oxide gas without having to use the canisters and the crackers. And they're fairly accessible price-wise. If we think about, this nitrous and other inhalants are often a drug of initiation for use for youth. And so the fact that they are easily accessible in our community, both economically and in the market, is definitely concerning. So just a little bit about the implementation timeline of the work on nitrous, on nitrous oxide policy work in our county. In January twenty-twenty-four, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors directed public health to work on recreational nitrous oxide used through education and policy approaches. In June twenty-twenty-four, our division was awarded funding from the Substance Use Prevention Block Grant, which comes from the federal government, to be able to work on this nitrous policy. And then DHHS Public Health Substance Use Prevention Program teamed up with community partners from October to April to conduct a retail landscape analysis that included Arcata, as well as our other city jurisdictions and unincorporated counties. Arcata, as well as our other city jurisdictions, and unincorporated county did not include any tribal areas because those are sovereign nations and they don't fall under our jurisdiction. Um, and then throughout twenty twenty-five, as Merritt mentioned, we've been collaborating with, um, the different cities throughout the county in order to bring forward a unified approach for, um, the ban of recreational nitrous oxide sales throughout the county. Um, Arcata is the first one to bring it to the council, um, and the Board of Supervisors heard it, um, the first reading of it in, in early May at their meeting, and will be bringing it again for the second reading in June, um, with expected adoption of it in early July. Um, we were also invited to present at the UIHS, uh, United Indian Health Services Board of Directors Meeting in late April, um, and there were representation from all of the local tribes at that meeting. Um, and then, um, we are scheduled to go to Ferndale in mid-June, and there are also some other city jurisdictions that are planning to move forward with a nitrous oxide policy soon.
So as Brianna stated, there were observations made across the county, starting in October of last year, uh, all the way through April of this year, done by, of course, Public Health and our community partners. There were a total of hun- of a hundred and forty-four retail observations done during this timeframe, again, done across the entire county, except for, of course, tribal areas. So this right here is the recreational, uh, nitrous oxide landscape analysis, so it's kind of broken down of what was seen. So staff observed nitrous oxide products at twenty-four of the a hundred and forty-four retail outlets. So referencing what Brianna was talking about with the types of NO items out there, eighteen of those observed had all crackers, canisters, and tanks. Five only had crackers and canisters, and only one just had canisters. Um, all of, of those, uh, observed outlets, thirty-four have been, um, disclosed about these observations due to the safety for the staff and community partners. Um, and majority of those were retail outlets that have been worked previously on with items such as the TRL ordinance. So here is a breakdown of where these items were observed. I would like to make a moment here to define a couple of things. So you may see items such as smoke shops, and when I speak about, soon about tobacco retailers, the difference between the two. So tobacco retailers are any store that may sell tobacco products such as like a market or gas station versus a smoke shop, which may be a retailer that has a lot of profit or floor space dedicated to smoking items and paraphernalia. So those are the difference. Um, here is what we've observed in incorporated Arcata. We observed, uh, five of twenty retail outlets to have nitrous oxide, uh, sold openly in the store. Um, of course, one being, or, one being a sex shop, one being a glass blow shop, and three being smoke shops themselves. And it is, uh, important to notice that four of the five, uh, all, all sold tobacco products.
So, um, smoke shops and tobacco retail outlets that are selling nitrous oxide also have a larger variety of flavored nicotine and tobacco products on their shelves, which is important to note because, um, there was a new California law that came down that selling flavored nicotine and tobacco products is no longer legal. Um, and the community, including retailers, are sharing with our staff, um, anecdotally, that there are other retailers who are selling nitrous in, um, back rooms or behind closed doors, so we only did located in plain sight observations, uh, which basically means you go into the establishment and you just take a look around and see what's available. So, um, this is just, uh, like I said, what's readily available in the community. Um, we are the first county to move forward with this unified policy approach between both the county and the city jurisdictions. There are, um, different counties and cities throughout the state that have passed ordinances, including Ukiah and Crescent City. Um, and then Orange County down in Southern California was the first county to pass a nitrous oxide ordinance. Um, and the approach that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors has taken for the unincorporated county is to both have a standalone nitrous oxide ordinance as well as amend the county tobacco retail licensing ordinance to reference recreational nitrous oxide ordinance. Um, and I'll talk about that in just a second. Um, and as mentioned earlier, um, we are also, uh, partnering as, with tribal partners, um, for example, going, being invited to go to the UIH, UIHS Board Meeting on April twenty-fifth, um, and we are invited back to another meeting in July, so we're very excited to be working with them as well. Uh, so Merritt spoke a little bit about the provisions for the Arcata ordinance, which is fairly similar to the ordinance for unincorporated county. Um, it is a ban on the sale of all nitrous and associated paraphernalia. Um, there are no exceptions for culinary or automotive nitrous in the county ordinance. Um, it is permissible for use, as Merritt said, in healthcare, dental, and pharmacy, um, as well as if it's already contained in a food product for use as a propellant, for example, with packaged canned whipped cream. Um, the enforcement mechanisms that the county is using include the misdemeanor, the public nuisance, the revocation of the business license, and the revocation of the tobacco retail license. Um, that last one is not currently an option for Arcata since, um, Arcata does not have a tobacco retail licensing ordinance.
A little bit about the tobacco retail licensing ordinance. This was adopted in July of twenty twenty-three by Humboldt County Board of Supervisors for unincorporated Humboldt County. The purpose of this was to reduce the availability of tobacco for youth in the community while also providing local control for local state and federal tobacco laws. Public Health Division of Environmental Health is the enforcement for the TRL in unincorporated Humboldt County. Uh, the TRL amendment went forward on May sixth to adopt or reference the standalone NO ordinance, which would provide additional enforcement for tobacco retailers who sell nitrous oxide products and paraphernalia. So tobacco retailers who also sell nitrous oxide products risk not only losing their Humboldt, uh, county business license, but also losing their local tobacco license as well. That's it.
So if the council has any questions, we'd be able to, we'd be happy to answer this.
Thank you very much, you want to start, Sarah?
Um, I just had a couple quick questions for you guys. Um, and so it seemed by your numbers that you were showing of like the types of shops that exist in Arcata, that there really aren't any, yeah, culinary-related shops that exist in Arcata that sell any nitrous. Cause I know that one of the concerns a few folks have heard is, is that there is no exemption for, um, some of those chef stores. However, in Arcata, it seems like that wouldn't matter.
Yeah, we didn't observe that in Arcata. Um, I think it's important to note that we didn't go to every single retail establishment. Um, we did primarily go to tobacco retailers and then other retailers as, uh, comments were provided from the community are other retailers.
And related but unrelated question, but you guys brought up tobacco. Uh, how does every single vape shop still sell flavored vapes when they're illegal?
Uh, because it's a state law, but there's no local enforcement of it unless the state comes up here to do enforcement.
Okay. And so like, does, does like a tobacco retail license ordinance, something like that, could that create a mechanism to enforce on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Add it to a future agenda.
So, um, a concern that I have, I'm just wondering, like, some comments that I saw is, like, how do you stop people ordering it from Amazon and having it delivered here?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our understanding with other substances that have been banned such as butane gas, um, is that Amazon won't ship to the zip codes where there is a local ordinance in effect.
Great. And I know that you said you went to like retail outlets, um, like chef stores, but what about like restaurants that actually, like, have you gone to like Ramones or Brio that use those canisters in there?
Yeah, um, so there's not, uh, you know, a carve-out specifically for culinary use. Um, I will say that it's a sales ban, so it's, and those, I don't think those establishments are selling nitrous.
Well, listen, I have two high school boys, I fear for literally every time they leave the house, what they're getting into, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad that, I'm proud that we're the first city to bring this forward, I'm proud of our county, and I wholeheartedly support this, yeah.
Thank you, we'll go, you want to speak on this, Sarah?
Um, I just wanted to thank you for the collaboration and for all of us working together. And my, my concerns, uh, were just if engagement had been done to the restaurants and auto-shops, but it sounds to me like Meredith asked that question and it's been answered, so, um, thank you.
A lot of the questions were already addressed. Um, I too concur, I'm proud that Arcata is the first to bring this ordinance to our community. And I guess the question was posed about why are these stores still selling? And the response was, well, the state's not coming here, but why is our county, the tobacco education program, not doing education? Because when I was a tobacco educator for six years with formerly St. Joe's Health System, we went out to the community, boots on the ground, and educated these stores that sold the tobacco. And so while it wasn't the state, it was certainly a diversion, it was eyes on them, and a lot of them did do what was necessary, like getting it out of the line of sight with the shorter, you know, for children, basically. So I'm just curious why we're not addressing that. And then just wanted to comment, because I did some research about this, the number of deaths attributed to nitrous oxide poisoning has rose more than a hundred and ten percent between two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty-three, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. So I am thrilled that we are doing this ordinance. I have a question, and maybe I didn't spend enough time reading the whereas. It, we talk about the fine, and it says, any person violating, it, does that mean consumers? Or just the sellers?
And, and it, it's focused on the sale.
Okay, okay. I was just making sure that those who are doing the sales do get a higher penalty, more jail time, that kind of thing. Um, I guess that's all I got, thank you. Yes, you wanted to speak, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, um, when Courtney went out and visited the nineteen tobacco retailers in Arcata, she did do education. Um, however, Arcata, uh, doesn't have a tobacco retail licensing ordinance, so she was mostly looking at the State Act sticker, and she provided, for retailers that weren't in compliance with that, she actually came back and provided new stickers for them. Um, and then for the flavors, because we are only healthy communities, is the education and outreach, we can't do any enforcement, so she certainly spoke with them about the state flavor ban and reminded them that they, you know, shouldn't be selling those products. But again, we have no enforcement authority in the city of Arcata.
But now we know, they know we're coming for them. So to speak.
Well, I, I think this is a, a good direction. It just, this is awful to say, but it takes me back years and years when I had all these friends that, well, I should never mi- never mind, forget it. I won't even say it, never mind, never mind.
Could I make them?
I just think about it, I just think about, you know, I, how it's evolved, I should say that. It's evolved from what, from how it was used a long time ago to being within the, um, market where people could actually access it. And it's, I know it's very detrimental to your health and, uh, causes, and it's very expensive.
And the litter, I don't think we even talked about, like, just the environmental impact of all this.
School besides, tanks have been found in the streets. Um, I have a friend whose twenty-one-year-old son died from whippets, and it's heartbreaking. And I too, like Meredith, have, uh, you know, a younger adult child now, she's twenty-one, but that's the age that they're targeting this, and it's, it's scary as heck. Um, are we able to do a motion and then move to public comment, or?
Yeah, we can.
So I'd like to, um, make a motion then, um, for, consider introducing, um, ordinance number fifteen seventy-eight. So it's not consider, I would recommend, right?
You would, you would.
I make a motion, okay, for the ordinance of number fifteen seventy-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending chapter three, water of title, uh, seven, public works of the Arcata Municipal Code. I'm not reading the right one.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, can I interrupt real quick?
Absolutely.
I just didn't hear the portion of the motion to introduce the ordinance, and I did hear ordinance number fifteen seventy-eight, so I was just curious if we could.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance number fifteen seventy-eight.
No, it's seventy-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, why?
That's why she's.
Oh, cause I'm on the wrong page here. Somehow that.
Yeah, it should be at the bottom of page one hundred and ten.
Okay, here we go, all right. So consider the ordinance of number fifteen seventy-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata.
You don't want to consider, you want to introduce it.
I'm int- okay. I'm gonna let somebody else do this, here, go for it.
Keep going.
I, I thought so, but, okay, well, three's a charm. All right, I'm going to make a motion to introduce ordinance number fifteen seventy-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, adding Article two to Title four, chapter two, making it unlawful for any person in the city to sell, offer, distribute, or provide nitrous oxide to any person. Is there more?
That's.
I'll second.
That's it, there's a second on it. And so.
Uh, just to confirm, um, the, the paper says Article eleven, and I believe I heard a different article number.
Oh, I thought I said eleven?
You said two.
Oh, oh, sorry, yeah, one, yep, you're right. Roman numeral right next to it, so yes, yes, got it. Article eleven.
Thank you.
I won't do that again.
Okay, so we have a second on the motion, and we, public comment, please. Thank you.
My name's Joanne McGee. And I appreciate, um, the Public Health Department and our city being really concerned about these types of, um, activities and products that are causing great harm to individuals and to our community. And, um, I just kind of want to share that I've talked to a few people who are struggling in this community, whether it's because of housing, or, um, you know, mental illness, or, uh, addictions, or whatever, um, they just are looking for coping, things to make them, help them cope. And I'm not at all endorsing using items like, products like this for coping, but this is the bigger picture when we're talking about people in our community, whether it's young teenagers, young adults, or people who are living on the streets, or living in the marsh, or up in the forest, or at places where I do cleanups and pick up a lot of those little canisters in my naivete, not even knowing what they were. But we've really got to do these ordinances, but we've got to get to the root of the problem. Um, and we need to become a community that, um, doesn't have people seeking out things like this to cope with their lives. So I just kind of need to say that, because we can put ordinance after ordinance after ordinance, but if we don't help these people in different ways, we're not doing enough.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Thank you, is there anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands on Zoom.
All right, not seeing anyone in the audience, and no one on Zoom. I would like to call for the question, all those in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item C is consider. I'm sorry. Yeah, thank, thank you, I just moved right along, so thank you very much for coming this evening, we appreciate your work that you've done and, and helping us get things together. So I'll move on to item C, which is consider introducing ordinance number fifteen seventy-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending chapter three, water of title seven, public works of the Arcata Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council and community. In a nutshell, the, um, environmental services would like to recommend adoption of a new ordinance, amending the city's municipal code to comply with the regulations of the the Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook, and codify the rules and procedures in the cross-connection control program to be congruent with the newly adopted regulation in the CCCPH I just mentioned. The background of this, uh, why we're doing this, is, uh, the current Arcata Municipal Code refers to outdated regulatory handbook that does not include new regulatory aspects of, that are required by the state. The purpose of the Cross Connection Control Plan is to protect the public water supply from the possibility of contamination by isolating contaminants which could backflow or back-siphon into the public water system within its customer's internal distribution system. This ordinance will give the city, uh, the city's updated Cross Connection Control Plan the authority it needs to be enforced under the conditions of the new state-adopted Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. The, uh, every publicly-owned water system subject to the new policy must be compliant with this policy by July one of this year. The city is required to appoint a certified Cross Connection Control Program Coordinator who is responsible for the protection of the public potable water distribution system. And the city has provided training for staff to obtain Cross Connection Control Specialist certification. to obtain Cross Connection Control Specialist Certification. The amendments do not impose new requirements that would after, that would alter the baseline impacts associated with the existing program. And so the proposed action does not have the potential to have a significant effect on the environment, which qualifies for common sense exemption for sequoia. This ordinance will have minimal impact on the city's budget, limited to training and certification that is required for this. And so I'd like to address any questions. I'd like to give an opportunity for our city attorney, if she has anything else to add to this, before we move into questions.
So I would, I would like to ask one question. This relates to if you have city water and you have a well. Is that how it works? Or is?
Any, any connection that's non-potable.
Any, any, okay.
But wells are included in that, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that was going to be required for every homeowner, even if they were, only had city water. Thank you. So now I will ask if you all have questions, but that was my main one to check.
Sorry, thank you, Deputy Director Colbert. And that, because the report is really technical, I was just wondering if you, just for the sake of everyone listening, if you could just give us a super quick layman's person's term about, you know, what's going on? Because there might be some confusion. It's pretty technical. So if you could just break it down to us, that would be great.
All right, well, the city has a Cross Connection Control Plan that's already established in the municipal code. It's just a, pretty much a one line that says, refer to this book. And that book is 215, 300 pages long. And so what this does is the state has adopted new guidelines with a specific set of guidelines. And we are to point to those set of guidelines now instead of the old set of guidelines. So that's what this is all about. I can go into what a cross connection is and why we need it and all that. But that's the main purpose for this change of.
No, I get that. The only other thing that I would ask is if you could just explain the cross connection. Because I'm sure, I mean, like, it's your area of expertise. So it's so basic to you, but other people might not know.
So a cross connection is any connection that can contaminate the water system. Mayor Stillman mentioned a well. If somebody has a well that's connected to their house, and then they have a potable connection from the city to their house, there is a potential without a backflow device that if there's a change in pressure or a line breaks or something, that it could suck water out of the well into the system and contaminate it and make people sick. So a backflow device eliminates that from happening if it's placed in the right place. And the Cross Connection Control Policy governs what people do with those devices, what type of devices that they have.
That is exactly the answer I was looking for. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Thanks for asking for that clarification, Stacy.
Yeah, I asked for it earlier because I wanted to understand, because we have so many regulations. And I was hoping that we were going to add one to all residents if they only had city water.
To be honest, excuse me, to be honest, nothing changes in the, very little changes in the regulations. It's just that we are now codifying the regulations and making it to where we can enforce them, gives us teeth. So there's very little changes that are made in the, in the actual regulations.
But also thank you for explaining it so everyone can understand what the issue might be. And are there other comments on this?
I will make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1578, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending Chapter 3 Water of Title VII Public Works of the Arcata Municipal Code. I will second.
Okay, any comments, well, public hearing? Does anyone want to publicly speak on this item? Anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So now we're getting to oral and written communications. We continue. And thank you very much for your presentation this evening. The council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items not listed on the agenda. The council may respond to statements. So if you would like to come forward and speak, please do. Thank you. Good evening.
Okay, I've been totally bumble, anyway.
There's a little microphone right there on the dais that you might see.
I live in Arcata, and I'm 92 years old. And probably older than anyone in this room, I'm sure. Anyone who was in here before. Anyway, so I was alive during the Second World War, as well as the Holocaust. And a lot of history that they don't even teach anymore. But everyone in this room was alive on October 7, 1923, in 2023. That was the worst slaughter of Jews since the Holocaust. This was not part of a war. Israel left all of Gaza in 2006, and then Gaza voted Hamas in as their leader. And Hamas is an internationally known terrorist organization. The slaughter of Jews on October 7 came from Gaza, home of Hamas, and started a war. Israel has a right and a duty to protect its citizens as any sovereign country would. Hamas, besides slaughtering unarmed citizens, took hostages, 251, whom 58 still remain in the tunnels, still remain starving to death. Probably, I don't even know how many are alive. Making my beautiful Arcata, where I have lived for two decades, a sister city to a terrorist city, boggles my mind. Just boggles my mind. Hamas has not stopped shelling Israel, and they have not released the hostages. The war would stop immediately if they would. But to the terrorists, they don't want the war to be over. They have convinced good people, like you, some of you, that somehow Israel is to blame for their own slaughter. I don't, I don't know if this isn't anti-Semitism in its worst. I don't know what is. It breaks my heart to find so many good people taken in by their hateful rhetoric. As a Jewish woman, I feel unsafe in my own home with so many in this area that have come in here and talked about this. I am starting to feel unsafe in my own home. Why is there no resolution for Gaza, home of Hamas, to stop shelling Israel and return the hostages? Please, I beg you, read some history. Watch the movies about October 7. They were taken by Hamas. They were celebrated in Gaza. Do you want it? They were asking to make a sister city. They're celebrating the death of these atrocities in Gaza. I lived through it, and I do not support my city of Arcata being made a sister city to a terrorist city whose one goal in life is to exterminate all Jews.
Thank you very much for your comments.
And I thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next time I'll come in early and try and cut it down to two minutes.
Thank you for staying this evening.
It was a pleasure being here tonight, actually. It was really very interesting. I find it very interesting. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
My name's Jody, and I'm a resident of Arcata. That's my mom over there. I'm here to speak about my opposition to making Gaza City a sister city to Arcata. Gaza is an active war zone. The war that was started by Hamas on October 7, 2023, happened when 5,000 jihadist fighters and male civilians invaded Israel and genocided over 1,200 people and injured thousands. They slaughtered livestock, pets, and burned people alive in their homes. They raped women and girls. And then they also took 251 hostages, including American citizens and peaceful music festgoers. Hamas continues to hold 58 hostages, including the bodies of four Americans that were murdered. They're using those hostages as bargaining chips. They care not at all for the Gazan people. The Hamas Charter states clearly that this, to them, is a religious war. They chant "Death to Israel, death to America" while stealing aid meant for Gazan citizens and using children and women as human shields. They stash their weapons in schools, hospitals, and even UN buildings. And they even had the UN, UNRWA people, take part in those massacres. If Hamas wanted to end the war, they can return all 58 hostages, lay down their weapons, and accept the ceasefire that was approved by the surrounding Arab states. I do not think my city and tax money should go to a war zone controlled by a globally acknowledged terrorist organization. Some people earlier were here, and they claim that Israel is an apartheid state and that they're genociding everyone. And nothing could be further from the truth. I can tell you from my own experience that those people have never visited the Middle East, Israel or Gaza, and I have visited both. And I can tell you that what they are saying, they're being taken in by so much propaganda. There are 17 million Jews worldwide, and there are 2.5 billion Muslims. If even 20% of those are radical, that is 540 posts online for every one Israeli post. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good evening. My name's Joanne McGary, and I want to talk about three things. But just want to remind you, I'm not going to talk today about an international city of peace or a nonviolent city project or signing onto the Charter for Compassion. I've been told that I need two people from the dais there, city council members, to support these concepts. And maybe I'll come back and see if I can convince you to be a champion for me. But I want to talk about what I've learned about the Arcata Plaza Historic District or Historic Designation. I'm a little confused. It's something that apparently has been in the works, and they're trying to, you know, make it happen. And I'm just concerned, first of all, that the public that lives here in Arcata doesn't seem to be aware of this. And maybe there was some tabling done at the farmer's market. But I think this is the type of thing that the community really needs to be included in and not just set aside to a committee or anything like that. So have we talked to the Wiat people? You know, I've been long feeling that somebody had spoken here about name back. And I, you know, would really love for the plaza to be called the Gudini Peace Plaza, if nothing else. And, you know, ultimately, maybe giving it back to the Wiat's at some point down the road. But this whole historic preservation or historic designation is of concern to me because a lot of people in the community aren't aware of it. And they need to be, because it's our community and it's our plaza. So the second thing is I went to the city council in Eureka last night, but didn't stay. But they were talking about this new ordinance for them that keeps making sitting too long or lying down on the sidewalk too long a potential criminality event. And it apparently did not get passed. But I had gone to Eureka by bus to the dentist and then was walking through Old Town. And I was looking for a place to sit. And I was looking for a place to use the restroom facilities. And it was really, really difficult. And fortunately, the Wiat Community Center, Cultural Center, let me, you know, sit down and use facilities. So that was really good. But it reminds me that we here in Arcata don't have adequate facilities for people like me to sit and, you know, do what I need to do when I walk around town. Finally, I didn't give you the right title of the book I just received. It's called "One Day Everyone Will Always Have Been Against This." "One Day Everyone Will Always Have Been Against This." I just started reading it. It's an incredible book. We talk about history and learning about the whole situation. This is a book that helps. Thanks for the ceasefire resolution back in March of 2024.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that's in the audience tonight? Okay, I know, but I'm just. Do we have anyone on Zoom for this evening?
Yes, Isaac, please go ahead.
My name is Isaac Merker. And I'm here in support of the Arcata Gaza Sister City in Palestine. 16,000 children have been identified as killed in 18 months by American bombs. This is a genocide funded by our tax dollars. Arcata Gaza Sister City emphasizes what we can do locally to connect with the people of Gaza. From helping children celebrate Eid to meeting with Gazan university students over Zoom to monthly solidarity bike rides in Arcata with the Gaza Sunbirds, an internationally leading paracycling team whose co-founder Ahmed Al-Dali was murdered by Israel Monday in their ongoing efforts to crush any vestiges of hope for the Palestinian people. Ahmed's dream was to uplift the spirit of Palestinians by demonstrating that they can realize their dreams despite everything. We can keep the dream alive by participating in the next Global Solidarity Bike Ride for Gaza Sunbirds, 3:00 PM, Sunday, June 1 at the Arcata Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Alice, please go ahead. Alice, please unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. I just would like to start with the fact that May 15 is the commemoration of the Nakba, which is the day that over 750,000 Palestinians who were ethnically cleansed from their land by Israel. And the Israeli occupation is ongoing with over 10,000 prisoners taken by Israel hostages. And it's really, really important for us to know the truth. So the second thing that I would like to say is thank you to Sarah Schaefer for sending a letter to CalPur's Board of Directors demanding they divest in genocide. You are obviously paying attention to your constituents and most importantly, to the voices of our friends and family in Palestine and those Palestinians in diaspora, including those living in Arcata and Humboldt County. For those of you who are not paying attention, these are some direct quotes from Palestinians. This one is from my friend, who I wake up first thing every day to see if he's still alive. He told me today, the situation is very dangerous. Another friend, I swear to God, for 10 days we haven't eaten bread. My children screaming for night and day from hunger. Another friend, my children, Sarah Lamis and Yahya Baby, ask me for bread, and I have nothing but tears. As of yesterday, day 592 of this genocide against Palestine by Israel, 87 Palestinians were killed in Gaza. 14,000 babies in Gaza may die in 48 hours if Israel doesn't let aid in. 362 deaths linked to malnutrition and lack of medicine since the start of the total Gaza siege in March. Israel bombs homes in Der El Bela, massacring 14 people, including 12 family members and kids. Attack in Nusret Camp massacres 15-plus Palestinians. The iOS bombs two homes in Jabalya, massacring 12 Palestinians. There was an attack on school shelter in Beitla, killing four people. Shelling on homes in Shujia kills three kids. Bombing in Zaitun and Al-Daraj killed two people, injuring others. iOS quadcopters attacked Al-Awda Hospital ambulance. Drone attacks in Conunist kill nine-plus people. This was only yesterday. And here we are today in Arcata, getting to honor all of the.
Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Naomi, please go ahead. Naomi, please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I hope that I have time to read this. I think the historical background on the current situation in Israel-Palestine is primary. So I'll just read as much as I can. So we're talking about the Fertile Crescent, which is also known as the Middle. So we're talking about the Fertile Crescent, which is also known as the Middle East, has 10,000 years of human habitation, Canaanites, Philistines, Hittites, Amorites. 3,000 BCE, drought and famine drive Central Asian cattle herders, which are male-dominated cultures, to the conquest of agricultural Mediterranean lands, which were more egalitarian. And the biblical story of Cain and Abel reflects this conflict. Area is subject to a series of empires, Assyrian, Babylonian, Roman, Ottoman, and British. Jewish independence is brief under David and Solomon. Jesus, the last anointed king of Israel, crucified as a rebel against the state. Any rebellion was anathema to Rome. Jews continued to rebel until 66 to 68 of the Common Era. 68 CE, Roman destruction of the Second Temple and Masada, thousands killed on both sides. The dead sea scrolls are hidden in caves at Qumran. Romans rename Israel-Palestine after the Philistines who lived on the coast. Pagan beliefs infused Christianity with the concept of a man as incarnate God and human sacrifice, which was anathema to Judaism. Biblical story of Abraham and the sacrifice of Isaac calls for the end of human sacrifice a thousand years before surrounding peoples ended the practice. 312 of the Common Era, the Roman Emperor Constantine converts the empire to the Roman version of Christianity and all other variations of Christianity, of which there were many who are now heretical. Gentile Christians compose gospels in Greek, written 40 to 90 years after Jesus's death to clear Christianity of suspicion as rebellious toward Rome. 1,600 years of antisemitism ensue. Fourth-century Gnostic Christian scriptures are buried in a ceramic jar near Nag Hammadi La, Egypt. The Eastern Roman Empire continues to exist until the Ottoman conquest in 1453, at which time remnant Jews who had not fled surrounding territories convert to Islam and intermarry with Arabs. Palestinians and Jews share much of the same genetic heritage, both from ancient Canaanite 16...
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate them.
Sheri, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, City Council. I really thank you for all your time and effort you put into every meeting. I know it takes a lot out of you. I have to speak on this again, sadly. The sister city with Gaza issue is not a locally grown, organic issue. There are websites that give detailed instructions on how to bring these issues to local city council meetings. First it was the ceasefire, then BDS, now the sister city issue. What will come next? Who knows? Since this is not a local issue, but is part of a national propaganda effort, I don't think that our city council should feel obligated to take any action on this issue. During the ceasefire that happened a couple months ago, in which some hostages were thankfully released, enough food and medical aid entered Gaza to last for eight months. Much of that aid has, much of the aid that has entered Gaza since they started this war in October 2023, has been stolen by Hamas and sold at high price to their citizens. Any malnourishment of their citizens is on Hamas. Also, today, the UN aid chief retracted the claim about 14,000 Gazan babies dying within 48 hours. The correct timeframe on that is one year. One year, not two days. Just a tiny mistake, but of course, the headline gets out there, people read the headline, they never hear the retraction. This kind of rhetoric leads to tragedy in our own nation. In fact, tonight, there was a mass shooting in front of the Jewish Museum in Washington, DC during an American Jewish Committee event. Two Israeli embassy staff members were killed, and more wounded. The suspect shouted "Free Palestine!" while being arrested. I don't see an end to this, but I'm not going to stop speaking up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Jeanne, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I enthusiastically support a Gaza City/Sister City for Arcata, and for the council to divest from genocide, to comply with the World Court ruling. The viciousness the world is witnessing of Israel's livestreamed Holocaust is not new. A T-shirt is worn in Israel. It's a picture of a Palestinian woman who is late-term pregnant. A crosshairs is placed over the pal mother's face, and another placed over the baby inside her. It reads "One shot, two kills." I saw that picture in 2010. I'm going to read an account from an Israeli occupation soldier now. Quote, "There's not a soul in the streets, just a little four-year-old Palestinian boy playing in the sand in his yard. The commander suddenly starts running, grabs the boy, breaks his arm with the elbow and his leg here, stomped on his stomach three times and left. We all stood there with our mouths open, looking at him in shock. I asked the commander, 'What's your story?' He told me, 'These kids need to be killed from the day they're born. When a commander does that, it becomes legit,' end quote. I will say I did add Palestinian and didn't say Palestinian." That quote is from 1987, and I'd like to point out Hamas was also formed in 1987. This has been going on since at least 1947. Now I'll read more recent quotes. Quote, "Every few minutes, machine gun fire or tank shells hit Gaza. Grind them. After all, we're talking about eliminating cockroaches and other insects. There are no innocent people there." Quote. Israeli Army surgeon Sobo Amos, an Israeli MP, Yer Golin warns that Israel is now killing children in Gaza as a hobby, end quote. Another quote, "No one in Gaza is innocent. Yes, even the children will have to be killed. There's no other choice," end quote. That's an Israeli MP, Michelle Waldeger. Another quote, "The fly must be killed and also his children." That's an Israeli Minister, Amahi Eliyahu. Here's another quote that you can watch an interview from on Channel 14. It's from yesterday. Israeli MK Moshe Fanglin said, "Every child," quote, "every child, every baby in Gaza is an enemy. The enemy is not Hamas. We need to conquer Gaza and colonize it, and not leave a single Gazan child there. There is no other victory," end quote. City Council, these are all from this and last week. Hitler really did try harder to hide it. These open declarations elucidate the testimony I sent you already of international doctors quoting 80% of their patients in Gaza are children with intentional kill shots and charred children's bodies because Israel keeps dropping missiles on sleeping children in tents in the safe zones that Israel violently corralled them into in the first place. I've long ago emailed you all of those Human Rights Organization reports and United Nations Committee detailing this as genocide, with the Nazis' people then said they didn't know. Council, you all know. You read aloud an agreement to respect human rights from a UN document. Do you remember? Given that, what work other than sending the divest letter to...
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate them.
Tamara, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Tamara. Just one second. Good evening, council member. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to express my strong support for the recognition of May as a Jewish-American Heritage Month in our city. Jewish-American Heritage Month was established nationally in 2006 to honor the deep and enduring contribution of Jewish Americans to our country's history, culture, and progress. For more than 365 years, Jewish Americans have played a vital role in shaping the United States, advancing science and medicine, enriching the arts, leading the business, and public service, and working tirelessly for justice and equality. This month also offers a meaningful opportunity to reflect on the resilience of communities that has faced discrimination, antisemitism, and violence both abroad and here at home. In recognizing this month, we take the stand against the hate, and I'm in favor of education, inclusivity, and understanding. Being a Jewish person, I've experienced antisemitism right here in Arcata. And in case you don't feel antisemitism is a widespread problem, I heard here tonight that antisemitism terror attack took place in front of the Jewish Museum in Washington, DC. Two members of the Jewish community were murdered, and several others were injured. To bring a greater understanding on such a problem that could occur locally, we need to help to ensure the next generation grows up with a deeper appreciation for the rich diversity that strengthens our city, including Jewish citizens. I hope that our city will join other around the country, like San Francisco, Mountain View, and many more. Informally, recognize that May is a Jewish-American Heritage Month. Doing so such a powerful message, doing so send a powerful message that we value every community's story, and we stand together against intolerance of any kind. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate them. Do we have another person?
We have one commenter, but they commented in early oral comment, so I don't think we'll go back to them.
I'm sorry.
And then there's no other commenters.
We have no more...
We have one that already commented at early public comment.
Yes. So are we concluding this?
We just had one more join, so I would suggest taking the last one.
Okay, thank you.
Kate B., please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. I just want to also thank Sarah for sending her letter for divestment. The clear and abhorrent lies that the community are spreading tonight regarding Palestine make me sick to my damn core. Just comply with the World Court ruling, comply with the International Court of Justice, comply with whatever humanity you have left in your body. As an HCU alumni and several degrees under my academic belt, it took the time, months, learning and researching the conflict that is happening in occupied Palestine. And as the veil over my eyes has been lifted, I am blown away by how many I thought were compassionate and empathetic community members banned at the weaponized victimization of Holocaust of 41 and 45. What about the Holocaust is happening right now in front of our eyes? I completely support a sister city and anything having to do in support of Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. And that concludes our Zoom call, callers. All right, well, then we'll go on to council reports. Who we'd like to start this evening? Don't all jump. Okay, we'll start with Meredith.
What did I do? I went to my LAFCO meeting this morning. So I'm vice chair of LAFCO. It's really interesting. I'm really enjoying learning about spheres of influences and annexations, and I got a report from the Neyland Fire Department today, as well as Garberville. Oh my gosh, what... Oh, crab season starts on May 30th, and thank you to staff who has worked hand-in-hand with HOVIN and the Crabs Board to make sure that we're open on time. Very excited for that. Next weekend after that is Forest Moon, which is great. Thank you for the Humboldt County Delnort Film Commission. There might be some other festivals coming on in June, but I'm not going to talk about Do you... What else? I also, you know, I do appreciate the fact that we recognize Happy, and we recognize June as Pride Month, and I also would like to just acknowledge that May is Jewish-American Heritage Month. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll go on to Kibberly.
I attended the Arcata Marsh Cleanup hosted by Humboldt Pet Supply, and I have to say I had to work hard to find trash, which is a really good problem to have. So yay, our marsh is looking really good. And I'll keep you posted about the next one upcoming. They haven't determined the date. And my Redwood Region Economic Development Commission has been canceled this month due to Memorial Day, so I'll catch you up on the next one, and that's all I have.
Thank you, and we'll go...
Thank you. I had the Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting, and just an update on the 101 project, the Indianola Undercrossing. The northbound and southbound traffic should be up on the bridge by the end of this calendar year, but there won't be the on-and-off ramps happening yet. I attended the Cal City's Advancing Equity Advisory Meeting, and also two homeless and housing meetings with our mayor today. And the theme was pretty similar at both of them, which is very dire. We've had a lot of resources to help folks, and yet that hasn't been enough. And now all of those resources, or most of them, are really being slashed, which will really show up in our community. And so I'm just wondering if maybe there's a way that we can combine with possibly our county to urge our state and federal lawmakers to increase funding for housing, not decrease it. I think it's, you know, for a future discussion, but it might show, might make a difference if we're very unified as cities and a county to ask for that, because it will affect all of us greatly. And that is all for me.
Thank you very much. Sarah?
I attended an RCEA Community Advisory Committee meeting. I am our liaison now to the CAC, so that was fun, just get to see all the different folks on that committee, and they talked about just how RCEA is meeting energy targets for procuring local energy and how that is becoming more difficult. And it was an interesting conversation that will eventually become before our board. And then tomorrow is my RCEA meeting, so nothing to report there. It is oyster season, if we're talking about festivals that are coming up. And so, starting along with, because I'm already thinking, I'm just, how busy is it going to be? Because we're going to have a big council meeting on June 4th, and you've got to be nice to us, because it's my birthday and it's the city manager's birthday, so it's going to be a real fun meeting. And then after that, we get to kick off all the fun Oyster Fest things, because Thursday, June 5th, is the Oyster Fest kickoff party that's going to be at the pub. That weekend is the Buy Valves and Brews 5K, where you can run around the marsh and eat oysters and drink beer, and sign up to volunteer at Oyster Festival, support it, do what you can, come out, eat a few oysters. And that's going to be, what, Saturday, June 14th, on the plaza, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM? I'm guessing. And it was my first outing as a little baby when I was born here in Arcata, and so it's always an annual tradition, and I love it. So can't wait for the rest of June. Here it comes.
And so I know you would like to be a rutabaga queen one day, and so the rutabaga whole event is going to be happening on Saturday. It'll be at the Eureka Theater, so you can go if you want. There's, I understand there's four really good candidates, or maybe there's five candidates for queen this year. And I have a meeting on Friday for Humboldt Transit Authority, because we're going to be talking about our hydrogen, trying to get our hydrogen and bus depot kind of organized around the fuel. And so we had a meeting yesterday dealing with the Earth Center, which is going to be, the bus system will be downstairs, it'll have their whole operation there, and up above it will be housing. And it's a project being done now with Danco, and we're waiting for them to, they've gone through one phase, and they were turned down. Now they have to go through another phase, and hopefully it'll happen by the third time, which will be this fall. Because Humboldt Transit Authority has had quite a bit of money that they've been holding on for quite a while to be able to get this project underway, and we'll see what happens. So one other thing we have to deal with is that we have dates for future meetings and the future agenda items. And so we have scheduled a joint study session with the Planning Commission for June 30th, 2025, at 5:30 in the council chambers. There are no closed sessions, there are no closed session reports, and we're adjourned.